Great, call the regular meeting of Township Council for Monday, February 24th to order. Of course, I would like to begin by acknowledging the traditional territories of the Kosh Salish peoples and in particular, our valued relationships with the Quantlin, Matzwi, and Semiamu First Na— Ktzi as well, and Semiamu First Nations. With that, I get a motion to adopt the agenda amended to add the additional delegation. Moved by Councillor Ferguson, seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion? Councillor Richter.
Yes, I'd like to move to remove items P3, P4, P5, P6, P7, and P8 on the basis that they are ultra varies or beyond our jurisdiction. And should they not be beyond our jurisdiction, which I highly doubt, at minimum, they deal with contractual and/or land or legal matters.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Seconded, is there any discussion? No, call a question on that amendment to A1. That amendment is defeated with Councillor Pratt, Councillor Rint, Mayor Woodward, Councillor Bailey, and Councillor Ferguson opposed. Councillor Martins?
Thank you. I was just wondering, maybe not necessary, but I noticed that the feedback or the public input from our budget is after the vote in the agenda, and I understand that. That's the way our agendas are organized. But I was wondering if we could maybe move to put N3 ahead of I2, just so that it's there and present if we want to talk about the feedback first before we make the vote.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Councillor Coost. Ms. Bauer, is there any hindrance to anyone discussing an item for information during another agenda item?
It's not procedurally incorrect, no. It is just a piece of information that just happened to fall there on the agenda.
And it could be referenced if it's relevant to an agenda item when the agenda item's being considered.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, great. So that, call a question on that amendment to A1. That amendment is defeated with Councillor Martins, Councillor Richter, Councillor Pratt, Councillor Rint, Mayor Woodward, Councillor Bailey, and Councillor Ferguson opposed. Now back to the main motion to adopt the agenda unamended. Call a question on A1. Not carries with Councillor Richter opposed. Can I get a motion to adopt the meeting minutes, the regular council meeting from February 3rd? Moved by Councillor Pratt, seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on those? Seeing none, call a question on B1. Not carries, Councillor Pratt opposed. Ms. Bauer, could you mention, Councillor Pratt intended to vote in favor of the adoption of the minutes? Do you want us to revote that? No, I don't think it's necessary either. Move on to our first delegation regarding the Walnut Grove Food Market. The delegate here, do we know, Ms. Bauer? Oh, please come forward, yep. Yes, so go ahead and introduce yourself to council, you have five minutes.
Okay, hello, my name is Jean. I am the owner of the Walnut Grove Market, who is doing the business within Roth. English is my second language, so it might be hard to understand. I provide a copy of the letter to follow along. And included a petition, a copy of the petition, but we got more signature as of yesterday. We have around 360 signatures in a week. Ninety-nine percent of the customer, we asked, wanted to sign our petition. And do you want me to read the letter?
Yes, please, and the petition as well, if you can, with Ms. Bauer.
Dear Mayor Wood and Council, we are a longstanding local business in the Walnut Grove neighborhood, proudly serving our community for the past 80 years. You are writing to bring to your attention the significant challenges we are currently facing due to recent viola violation letter we have received. For many years, a substantial portion of our sales has come from cigarettes. However, as the consumer preferences have evolved, many individuals seeking to quit smoking have transitioned from traditional cigarette to e-cigarettes. In this past, in 2020, our store adapted by shifting our focus from selling regular cigarettes to e-cigarettes. Previously, general convenience stores were permitted to sell e-cigarettes. However, as of last year, provincial regulations have restricted e-cigarette sales to businesses that limit entry to individuals aged 99 older. In light of this change, we inquired about obtaining a license to operate a dedicated base shop in a separate space. At the time, no specific viola regulated base shop. But the licensing office informed us that a viola was under discussion and therefore they could not issue a license. Seeking clarity, we also inquired about any existing municipal viola regarding age restricted businesses. The township advised us that no such viola existed. Based on this information, we implemented the 19-plus only policy and continued operations. Prejudice confirmed that this approach was a complaint, and many other businesses in similar situations followed the same practice. You can see the figure one, the... And recently, however, we are informed that our store's location, which falls within a C5 zone area, prohibit the sale of e-cigarettes due to joining viola. This restriction presents a significant challenge, as many small businesses, including ours, rely on e-cigarette sales to remain financially sustainable. Furthermore, with upcoming US tariffs, small businesses like ours will face even greater difficulty competing. To address these concerns, we propose dividing our store into two separate stores. Store A, a dedicated space for e-cigarette sales accessible only to customers aged 19 and older. Store B, a family-friendly retail space focused on products for children and general consumers. This solution would allow us to continue serving our community while complying with the regulations. Additionally, we would enable us to create more jobs, contribute more in taxes, and support the Canadian economy. If we are forced to discontinue e-cigarette sales, we fear that consumer will turn to illegal, smuggled nicotine products from the US, which could pose health risks and undermine local businesses. Furthermore, without this crucial revenue stream, our business may become unsustainable, ultimately leading to an explosion. We appreciate your time and consideration in reviewing our concern. We would recommend the opportunity to discuss potential solutions further and look forward to your response. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have a petition, if you could please provide it to Ms. Bauer there, that would...
I already provide the petition, yeah.
That would get distributed to all of council.
Yes.
Great, I see no questions from council, thank you very much. Councillor Richter.
Okay, I'm not quite sure, are we supposed to put our hands up on the screen here? Or put our, or press our buttons?
No, you continue as normal.
Okay. And so why are the screens on right now?
Councillor Van Pochter will be joining the meeting shortly.
Okay. I had a question, Mr. Kim.
Yes.
And the store that you're talking, so you're gonna actually physically separate the two stores? Like divide them into two separate stores?
Yes.
Okay. And are you in any close proximity to any schools, like high schools or... What's your street address, I guess? Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Great, that's it, there's no other questions from council, and thank you very much for your delegation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next delegation, I don't have the form in front of me for the late delegation, but please come forward. Yeah, go ahead, thanks.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Tim English, and I serve as the Membership Officer for QB Local 403. When I'm not serving this role, I am employed by the Township of Langley as a carpenter in the Parks Department. First, I'd like to say that our president sends his regrets for not being able to attend, and also that you'll have to endure me in his stead. QB Local 403 represents the dedicated municipal workers of the Township of Langley. Our members deliver essential services across many departments, including bylaw enforcement, community planning, corporate administration, engineering, public works, recreation, arts and culture, and RCMP civilian services. Many of us not only live in the Township of Langley, but also, oh sorry, not only work here, but also live here, using and proudly providing the vital services to our friends, neighbors, and community. I am here today to discuss our locals' interest in the budget considerations before council. We acknowledge both the difficulty of such a complex and important undertaking, as well as the challenges our community faces, and the importance of providing robust public services, and wish to advocate for priorities that benefit both township employees and the community as a whole. To this end, one of our ongoing concerns shared by both the union and the township administration is the recruitment and retention of staff. Providing high-quality programs and services for township residents requires high-quality, invested, and long-term experienced staff. Accordingly, ensuring staff of current facilities are adequately resourced, securely employed, and fairly compensated must be a top priority for the township if we are to attract and retain workers required to provide these services or community needs. QB Local 403 is excited for the opportunity to serve the community at the recently announced new community centers, and we eagerly anticipate discussions of their staffing complements. Additionally, we look forward to continuing the good work of full-time conversions, which we bargained for in the collective agreement. We believe that a healthy, unionized workforce is essential to the township's future. In addition to delivering the vital services residents depend on, permanent, full-time, and fairly compensated jobs, not only support workers, but also strengthen the local economy. We support councils' deliberations on the proposed budget and the commitment to providing high-quality services for residents, and are pleased to continue working collaboratively with senior administration to provide the high levels of service that township residents deserve. We welcome any questions, look forward to continued discussions. Thank you.
Councillor Richter.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. English. Recruitment and retention of staff, so are you... It says budget considerations, is there not enough staff? Or is there not enough training programs? I'm trying to get a handle on what it is that you want to see more of.
All of the above.
All of the above, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, seeing no other questions from council, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So today, we have presentations for two Community Heritage Register recognitions, and I'm gonna do these one at a time, and we have some special guests here as well to recognize the heritage preservation efforts that have been going on, that have been ongoing from these two parties and these two groups. The township maintains a Community Heritage Register, which is an official listing of the historic properties that have been formally identified as having heritage value or character within our community, along with the heritage inventory of unregistered assets. And in the Township of Langley, it's obviously important that we honor and preserve our past as much as we can. And so 15 years ago, a plaque program that we're currently underway with here today was established to acknowledge the people and the groups who add their sites to the Community Heritage Register and are taking personal steps to preserve, restore, and adapt them for continued use into the future. And so today, two plaques are being presented to recognize two recent additions to the register. The first to be recognized is the Ryzen Residence located at 19678 80th Avenue, built in 1931 by a local contractor, Mr. Starchuk. The house represents a time of interwar development and features an early vernacular farmhouse design. And by 2019, though, the house needed significant work and would have been left in a state of disrepair. But as part of a proposal for a townhouse development on a larger site, the Mitchell Group signed a heritage revitalization agreement and committed to restoring it for use as a home once again, which is fabulous and wonderful to see. The second location to be recognized here today is the Volunteer Aldergrove Fire Hall Number 3, constructed in 1958 and officially opened on October 10th, 1959. The Aldergrove Fire Hall Number 3 is the oldest surviving fire station in all of Langley. And the fire hall was a community-led project spearheaded by the Aldergrove Fire Department. More than 100 people donated their time, money, and supplies to construct the building. And then it continued to be operated by volunteer firefighters for many years. Most recently, it was most well-known for its laws, a longtime home to the Milshon Shop, a landmark confectionery business and cafe in downtown Aldergrove. Council, Township Council first purchased the property over two councils ago for the purposes of building a road extending 29th Avenue. And thankfully, the last council changed that decision and formally registered, formally recognized the, this term, it was added to the register as a condition of transferring the property, now owned by Meals on Wheels. And so as of today, the building is home to their fabulous, well-needed, much-needed operation. operation and their firehouse cafe, continuing the tradition of bringing together volunteers to provide services to our community. And so here today to accept the plaques on behalf of these two heritage sites. For the Ryzen Residence, we have Jaclyn O'Shea on behalf of the developer Mitchell Group and Ryan O'Shea on behalf of the builder, Miricon Development. For Alder Grove Fire Hall number three, we have board members Deanna Horn and Manji Gill on behalf of its new owner, Langley Meals on Wheel. Did Manjeet not make it here today? No, didn't make it. So just Deanna today, but I know Manjeet sends her regrets. These plaques represent significant heritage conservation efforts and show our collective appreciation for preserving these special places within the Township of Langley. Once again, thank you and congratulations for the plaque and being here today and everything that you all have done to preserve these two assets. Thank you.
[applause]
Why don't we, um, we separate from the law council if anybody wants to, you know, a joint council photo? Probably should. Yeah. Do you mind my first?
Oh.
One more.
One more.
Got lighting.
Go ahead, Counsel Pratt.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Just in light of celebrating the the Alder Grove Fire Hall being given a plaque today, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Tammy Quiring and the Alder Grove Heritage Society for all the work that they did to actually make sure the building wasn't a road and is the great use it is today. So congratulations, Tammy.
Yeah, I concur. I remember when we first met, right after the election in twenty eighteen, to make sure this building was preserved. And again, thank you for everything you've done. All right, so let me carry on here. Okay. Reports to council, item E one, Canada Day options for twenty twenty-five. Does anybody wish to speak to it before we move to a motion? Counselor Kuntz.
Yeah, is there any, um, any concern around the airport if we have drones flying around?
Dear worship to Counsel Kuntz, there is no concerns as the airport will be shut down during that timeframe.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, it's not a surprise that I'm gonna speak in favor of number two. Well, fireworks are a lot more spectacular and showy and and I agree in some aspects. A better show, with my background, I can't support fireworks from a safety point of view, both personal safety. I've attended fireworks, injuries, and a significant amount of fireworks caused fires. So I'd like to support option two.
Great. Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'll also be pleased to support number two. It was a great show, the first time we got it last Canada Day, and I'm looking forward to seeing how they can make it even bigger and better moving forward.
I think that would require additional budget, Counsel Pratt.
The drone show itself within the budget envelope that they have, I'm looking forward to it even being bigger and better.
Yeah, I think if you're looking forward to be bigger and better, I think from what I've heard, that would require additional additional funding. Counsel Ferguson?
Oh, I also agree that the drone show was very good and a lot of people attended last year. It was overly successful because I think they had to open up a few more bleachers in the area where the FC plays. So I will be supporting the drones as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Martins?
Thank you. And I just want to point out that it went into more detail in the actual report, but staff is looking at merging rather than having two events into one location, co-locating and doing it starting a little later in the afternoon and going through to the evening. And I really like that. It seemed a little clunky, having the two different ones. So I think that's great. That's more efficient and I appreciate that staff are adjusting as they experience these and from feedback from people in the community. I too have a concern about fireworks. As mentioned, the fire safety, I also worry about the impact on animals, the wildlife and pets, and how they respond to fireworks. So I I will be in favor of option two, the drone light show. I think that's it's safer and it's more palatable and it's, you know, it's it's cool. So, thank you.
So Counselor Bailey, this will go to you to speak. If you wish to move a motion, anyone can move a motion, but if you wish to move one.
I'll move option two. It'll be accepted.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Is there any other discussion on option two? Mr. Cooner, no speakers. I just had a question about, you know, would council expect something substantially similar to what occurred in twenty twenty-four without additional funding?
That is correct. It would be substantially similar in sense of, and it's highlighted within the report itself, the duration would be eighteen minutes, the cost associated, and the technology and the audience attention being captured by the same drone show that was done historically.
Yeah, so I was certainly underwhelmed. It was like an interesting thing to try and see firsthand. I've seen some other examples on YouTube that were certainly a little bit different than than what we had contracted here in the township. If there's other options to look at, that'd be great. If there's other funding required to make it better, maybe that should be brought forward. I was I was certainly speaking for myself, certainly underwhelmed with it. And to repeat it, you know, I probably would would have some other ideas, but I sense the majority is heading in the direction of no fireworks. If that's the case, we can we can determine if there's any other options to do with the drone show, if that's the direction council goes. Counsel Kuntz?
Yeah, what is the capacity for the stands compared to the LEC? Is it bigger at MAP? I think so, right? No?
The grandstand itself at McLeod is approximately twenty-two hundred, whereas the LEC is closer to seven thousand.
Oh, there was seven thousand people there last year in those stands? Because that might be an issue is if we're gonna be hosting it at at MAP. But I'm I'm all for the drone show. But what about the people? Are we gonna be able to fit that many people there?
Mr. Cooner, do we have the estimated attendance? I believe that one side was about two-thirds full.
That is correct. Within the report, we did have draw about eighteen to twenty thousand attendees, but it was, that was the McLeod Athletic Park event and it was through the hours of eleven AM to five PM. And with Willoughby Community Center, it was about ten to twelve thousand.
I'm not sure what you're trying to edit.
And with respect to the Willoughby Community Park evening, that was approximately ten to twelve thousand attendees, and that was from eight to ten thirty PM. So we don't expect the attendees to, during the exact drone light show, that's when you do expect the highest attendance, but the people do flow in and out. So and the we're anticipating it from to be the new event from two PM to ten PM.
Okay. I'm, okay. So I guess we're accounting for the fact that we could have a lot of people down at MAP.
Dear worship, Counsel Kuntz, that is correct. We are anticipating that there may be large crowds, and if there's any further requests that are required, we will be bringing that forward to council's attention, whether it's further bleachers that need to be purchased. We will review that within our operational budgets if the funding is there and available.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Sort of two quick points, one in follow-up to what Counselor Kuntz was sort of asking about there. I remember the last McLeod Athletic Park late night Canada Day celebration, may or may not have been on the field, but not participating in any of those events. Are we anticipating having seating on the actual field itself at MAP to watch the drone show later night, or will it be only relegated to the grandstand?
Dear worship to Counsel Pratt, we're not anticipating any seatings on the actual field itself. It'll be to at the grandstands.
Okay, so we won't have necessarily the same capacity for people to watch the drone show at MAP that we would have at Willoughby Community Park?
That would be correct. It won't be the same capacity in that sense, but the the numbers of hours will be larger in the sense of the attendees flowing in and out of the event itself.
Okay, thank you. And then to the point about the cost of the drone show and future options, would it be prudent at this point to have a motion to have staff bring forward possible future options for an expanded drone show for Canada Day twenty twenty-six at this point?
You can certainly do it if council elects to proceed with option two.
So as a subsequent motion?
I'll take it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I too have a question about attendance, because the McLeod Athletic Park had eighteen to twenty during the daytime, but the Willoughby had ten to twelve in the evening, but the grandstand will only seat twenty-two hundred, I think I heard you say, Mr. Cooner, is that correct?
Yeah, with respect to the grandstands, Counsel Richter, that is correct.
Okay. So when they used to do the fireworks, and it was before the township took it over, I believe Grant Ward used to be involved with that, Counselor Ward, years ago. There used to be huge traffic lineups all along Fifty-Sixth Avenue, down on Fraser Highway, up to Sixteenth. Have we got any plans in place to deal with traffic management?
Dear worship, Counsel Richter, there is plans to deal with traffic management. We will have traffic management staff or contractor out as well managing any concerns.
Okay, thank you.
So new discussion, call the question on option two. That carries with Counselor Rint, Mayor Woodward opposed. So now we're back to Counselor Pratt. Did you wish to look at some additional options?
Yeah, I suppose the wording can be fixed.
Whoops.
The idea would be that, move that, council request that staff bring forward potential options for Canada Day twenty twenty-six with a potential range of options.
Five, I believe, you mean, right?
For next year's Canada Day.
So you want the drone show this year to be the same?
If we have the time to to increase the, you know, show's capacity for this year, great, but I was gonna say for twenty twenty-six.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So as I was saying, that council request that staff bring forward a range of options for Canada Day twenty twenty-six drone show with expanded drone capacity.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Counselor Bailey? Yeah, go ahead. I think the motion speaks for itself. All right, is any other discussion on that? So you don't call the question on that, additional motion under E one. That carries with Counselor Richter opposed. Any other motions on on the Canada Day? Move on to E two, Seventy-Second Avenue, Two Forty-Eighth Street. I'll move the recommendation seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on E two? Seeing none, oop. Counselor Richter?
Yes. I note the cost being of a light being two, two million dollars. What is the cost of a four-way stop in there? And the reason I'm asking is because there is now so much east-west traffic on Seventy-Second Avenue, particularly during peak commuter times, that traffic is now queuing on Two Forty-Eighth Street quite significantly, waiting for a break in the traffic in order to turn left, or even right for that matter, but mostly left, onto Seventy-Second Avenue.
Dear worship to Counsel Richter, the cost for the stop signs would be approximately fifty thousand dollars, which more than likely would be within an operational budget.
Okay. I really think we should be referring that two-way stop to staff to look at a four-way stop. It's just, it's, it's, any people who live in the area, there's just so much commuter traffic, and I believe a lot of it is Abbotsford-bound, that Langley residents aren't able to access that turn now.
Yeah, so I think if you, to to change direction from the recommendation motion and go in the direction of a four-way stop would be pretty much amending away the original motion. So if this were to be defeated, I could come back to you for a motion for a four-way stop, or you could follow up with a subsequent motion.
Okay, thank you.
So any discussion, we'll dispose of the recommendation that's been moved and seconded under E two. That carries with Counselor Richter, Counselor Pratt opposed. Now Counselor Richter, that's gone ahead, but do you wish to follow up with something like a report on a four-way stop?
Yes. Could council please request staff to bring forward a report on cost and timelines for implementing a four-way stop at the Two Forty-Eighth Street Seventy-Second Avenue intersection?
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Counselor Pratt. So any other discussion? Nope, seeing no other discussion, I'll call the question on that subsequent report. That carries with, no, that's defeated on a tie vote, Counselor Rint, Mayor Woodward, Counselor Bailey, Counsel Ferguson opposed. Is there any other discussion or motions under E two? See none, call, move on to E three, Eightieth Avenue, Two Hundred Street Intersection Review and Pedestrian Safety Improvement. Is there any discussion? I do have a motion to simply receive the report and take no action, but is there any discussion or discussions with staff? Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Just hearing that, I'll be supporting that. I think the appropriate time to sort of deal with this issue is if we see back from the new transportation mobility strategy, a new strategy for how we deal with strip, slip lanes across the township, I think that would be an appropriate place to start to come up with a plan to pay for any rehabilitation of strip, uh, slip lanes that we currently have.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I was just wondering, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's required for this, what is the source? And that particular intersection was an intersection of great interest to the residents of Walnut Grove. Will we be seeking additional public input from residents on this plan?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship to Counsel Richter, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an estimated cost which would be directed to be included in the twenty twenty-six capital project budget, so that would be essentially, funding source will be.
The idea would be that move that council request that staff bring forward potential options for Canada Day twenty-twenty-six with a potential range of options.
Five, I believe, you mean, right?
For next year's Canada Day.
So you want the drone show this year to be the same?
If we have the time to increase the show's capacity for this year, great. But I was going to say for twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So as I was saying, that council request that staff bring forward a range of options for Canada Day twenty-twenty-six drone show with expanded drone capacity.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by councillor Bailey? Yeah, go ahead.
I think the motion speaks for itself.
All right, is any other discussion on that? So you know, call the question on that, additional motion under E one. That carries with councillor Richter opposed. Any other motions on the Canada Day? Move on to E two, Seventy-second Avenue, Two Forty-eighth Street. I'll move the recommendation seconded by councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on E two? Councillor Richter?
Yes. I note the cost being of a light being two million dollars. What is the cost of a four-way stop in there? And the reason I'm asking is because there is now so much east-west traffic on Seventy-second Avenue, particularly during peak commuter times, that traffic is now queuing on Two Forty-eighth Street quite significantly, waiting for a break in the traffic in order to turn left, or even right for that matter, but mostly left, onto Seventy-second Avenue.
Dear worship to councillor Richter, the cost for the stop signs would be approximately fifty thousand dollars, which more than likely would be within an operational budget.
Okay, I really think we should be referring that two-way stop to staff to look at a four-way stop. It's just, it's, it's, any people who live in the area, there's just so much commuter traffic, and I believe a lot of it is Abbotsford-bound, that Langley residents aren't able to access that turn now.
Yeah, so I think if you, to change direction from the recommendation motion and go in the direction of a four-way stop would be pretty much amending away the original motion. So if this were to be defeated, I could come back to you for a motion for a four-way stop, or you could follow up with a subsequent motion.
Okay, thank you.
So any discussion, we'll dispose of the recommendation that's been moved and seconded? Under E two. That carries with councillor Richter, councillor Pratt opposed. Now councillor Richter, that's gone ahead, but do you wish to follow up with something like a report on a four-way stop?
Yes. Could council please request staff to bring forward a report on cost and timelines for implementing a four-way stop at the Two Forty-eighth Street Seventy-second Avenue intersection?
Is there a second to that? Seconded by councillor Pratt. So any other discussion? Nope, seeing no other discussion, I'll call the question on that subsequent report. That carries with, no, that's defeated on a tie vote. Councillor Rint, Mayor Woodward, councillor Bailey, councillor Ferguson opposed. Is there any other discussion or motions under E two? See none, move on to E three, Eighty-eighth Avenue, Two Hundred Street Intersection Review and Pedestrian Safety Improvement. Is there any discussion? I do have a motion to simply receive the report and take no action, but is there any discussion or discussions with staff? Kelsa Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Just hearing that, I'll be supporting that. I think the appropriate time to sort of deal with this issue is if we see back from the new transportation mobility strategy, a new strategy for how we deal with slip lanes across the township. I think that would be an appropriate place to start to come up with a plan to pay for any rehabilitation of slip lanes that we currently have.
Okay. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I was just wondering, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that's required for this, what is the source? And that particular intersection was an intersection of great interest to the residents of Walnut Grove. Will we be seeking additional public input from residents on this plan?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is an estimated cost, which would be directed to be included in the twenty-twenty-six capital project budget. So that would be essentially, the funding source will be considered then during the twenty-twenty-six budget process. We would require a direction from council to, with respect to public consultation. At this time, in the event council endorses option one, we would proceed to include it in the twenty-twenty-six budget itself and then proceed with design, sorry, construction.
Okay, so when would construction be completed then under option one? Would it be completed in twenty-twenty-six or would it be completed in twenty-twenty-five?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, it would be, in the event it is approved in the budget process, in the twenty-twenty-six budget process, staff would anticipate the construction to begin in twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. So can we at least notify the resident groups, I think, that were quite vocal about this? That this will be coming forward in the twenty-twenty-six budget somehow?
Councillor Richter, I did say at the beginning of the discussion, I'd be removing a motion to receive the report and not take any action. So that would only occur if option one were moved, seconded, and approved by council.
Okay, so we're just voting on receipt right now?
No motion's been moved or seconded at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Martins?
Thank you. I'm a little concerned about us not taking action in light of the
Do you have any questions on the report? Because you can certainly debate that when the motion is moved and seconded.
Sure, I'll wait.
Okay, great. So I'll move that council receive report twenty-five dash twenty-two for future considerations. There a second to that? Seconded by councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on receipt? Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I think anybody here knows, and most of the people in the community know how I feel about slip lanes in general and how I'd like to see as many of them removed as possible for not only the safety of pedestrians and cyclists, but also people who are experiencing rear endings and all the sort of negative consequences of the slip lanes. But I feel that in this situation, focusing on a single one at this point might hold up the progress on rehabilitating all of the slip lanes that exist across the township. I know that is not a universally held opinion by those who sit next to me here at the table, but I'm looking forward to receiving the report and hopefully taking future action.
Councillor Bailey?
Yeah, I'm in favor of receiving this because slip lanes do serve a purpose, but in exactly this one here, either the islands for people to be on are too small, especially those that have disabilities like wheelchairs and that. And also the sightlines for the slip lanes have to be made so both the pedestrians and the drivers have, can see the pedestrian clearly at the entrance and also make sure that the dropdowns for accessibility point directly at the island. Those are concerns of mine when it comes to slip lanes, but they do, if they're done properly, I see them as serving a good purpose. So I like the idea of receiving this.
Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you. And I agree with the discussion today. I mean, slip lanes can indeed be helpful and can indeed be dangerous and a concern. We'll get the information back from staff. I tend to use them all the time. I guess I exercise caution and safety every time I use them, but they do serve an important purpose, not just for residents, also for safety, fire and police and ambulance as well. So I'm looking forward to the report. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Martins?
Yeah, thank you. I guess where I was going with this earlier is we're changing it from choosing an option to just receiving the report. And I thought the whole spirit of the motion was pedestrian safety. And I've heard it at this table in the past. You know, like what matters more, getting things done now to save people or slowing it down? And I guess that's my only comment here on this motion. It sort of lies in the face of the spirit of the original motion. With regards to option one, it's not leaving it as is. There maybe, if I can, through the mirror to staff, if you could maybe explain the amendments or the changes that would be made to that intersection and how it would affect traffic flow and visibility. I think it's just an extension. I'm not sure the language offhand, if I may ask that question through staff.
Yeah, Mr. Cooner, much of that information is in the report, but if you have anything you'd like to add?
I know it's in the report, Mr. Mayor, but I'm asking a question at this table that I would love staff to speak to.
Maybe you could be more specific with your question, because what I heard was explain traffic flow impacts of each option, which is in the report.
I know, I did not.
So maybe you could be more clear what your question is?
As I said, I will say it again, option one, how that impacts? Because I understand there's an extension from the curb that forces traffic to slow down somewhat, and I would just appreciate if that can be articulated by staff.
Mr. Cooner?
Yes, through your worship to councillor Martins, option one is essentially installing multiple aprons in all approaches. So that what that essentially does, it does reduce turning speed and slightly improve sightlines for passenger cars. And attached to the report, attachment B shows exactly the designs or the drawings that staff would be proposing. So that's a bit of a further extension that will allow larger vehicles like semi-trucks to be able to go on the apron itself, but smaller vehicles to have to slow down and adjust the turns, essentially then also increasing the sightline for pedestrians as well.
Thank you. And can I just reinforce the cost to make those amendments to that particular intersection?
Dear worship to councillor Martins, the staff anticipate those costs to be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Thank you, okay. And the other options are more, would cost more for the township if we went with two, three, or four?
That is correct, and some of the options do not take into consideration utility, relocations, or potential property acquisitions as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Richter?
Okay, so the motion that we're voting on right now is to receive for future action. Is that correct?
Future consideration.
Future consideration, all right. So what timeline does this anticipate? Or is this a more or less a tabling motion to be brought back whenever?
Well, this would be to receive the report, and then it's available for any member of council to pick up at a future time.
Okay. So what would be wrong with us sending this report, receiving it now, and then sending it out for public input?
Mr. Cooner, I don't think there'd be anything wrong with that, right?
Staff would have no concern with that. There can be a direction from council to do public consultation on one of the options or option one itself, and then staff can proceed according to council's directions.
Okay. I'm in favor of that option, that we at minimum take it out for public input because this was a quite significant concern, I think, in the Walnut Grove community.
Okay, councillor Bailey?
Yeah, I think I'm agreeing with what councillor Pratt brought up is I don't want to be looking at each one of these slip lanes one at a time. I think a coordinated approach, we send, we receive this, direct staff to give us a more detailed report on which slip lanes are tight like this one or in general, how to handle slip lanes better in a more comprehensive and coordinated approach. You know, I anticipate if we move ahead on this one, there'll be another one, another one. I would rather do it as a comprehensive package dealing with slip lanes and, you know, and because of, some of them are a little more hazardous than others, you know, maybe a recommendation on when they could move forward and deal with the most hazardous ones earliest. Thank you.
Kelsa Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what councillor Bailey was saying there because that is sort of the idea, the approach I'd like to take because, you know, while some people do see the value of slip lanes, I sometimes struggle because we don't have them on Two-O-eight and Eightieth. We don't have them on Two-hundredth and Eightieth. Many other municipalities around the Metro Vancouver region, which have arterial roads with similar, if not far greater, traffic concerns, don't have slip lanes. And so for me, the number one reason for them would be vehicle movement, and the number two being the ability of emergency services to use the corners effectively. So if we were to take a comprehensive look at all the slip lanes and potentially work with the emergency services personnel across the township on a more universal design for intersections without slip lanes that still meet their standards while also ensuring that cyclists and pedestrians are actually more protected? Because I trust every resident and non-resident to go into these intersections with due caution. However, the way that they're designed leaves it up to chance. And it doesn't take, it only takes one individual, whether it's a driver, pedestrian, or cyclist, to not be paying attention, and tragedy can happen. So if we can find a way to make sure that emergency services can still use intersections effectively to respond to calls, but ensure that pedestrian and cyclist safety is prioritized, I think that a more comprehensive approach moving forward makes a lot of sense.
Kelsa Richter?
Yeah, I think I want to amend this motion.
Okay.
Okay, receive for future consideration. So council receive for future consideration and ask staff to arrange a public consultation for community input on the options outlined in the report.
Right, is there a second to that? Seconded by councillor Martins? Is there any other discussion, councillor Richter?
I still think when we receive something for future consideration, unless we're putting specific measurements in there as to when future consideration is, I think that this could drift off into the never-never land and never reappear. And I believe this is important enough to the community of Walnut Grove that we owe it to them, we have a report here now, we need to share that report with them and get their input on it.
Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I appreciate the spirit of going to get community feedback on this. For myself, I can commit on camera publicly that as part of the TMS open house that's coming for, TMS update that's coming forward at the end of this year, making sure that this coming back to the council table for consideration would be a priority of mine. But I think that having the consultation on this specific intersection, when we're not even committing yet to actually do any of the options, might be premature and might take away from the conversation about slip lanes in general across the entire township. So I won't be supporting the public engagement on this one, but I look forward to public engagement on slip lanes in general.
I kind of concur. I think typically, public consultation comes along with an endorsement of moving forward in some way, setting the expectation that this is going to happen. And I would be cautious to set that expectation. I think this report is here, it can be referred to by anyone in the community, and it can be referred to any member of council to be brought forward back to any time if they wish to have council consider one of the other options. So I think we have this information, and I thought this was the best approach. Of course, if this fails, council contributes a different one. But on the amendment to engage on just one option, which is what the amendment is, I don't support that. So I'll call the question on that amendment to E three. That's defeated with councillor Pratt, councillor Rint, Mayor Woodward, councillor Bailey, and councillor Ferguson opposed. So now back to the main motion is unamended for receipt. Let's call the question on receipt of E three. That carries councillor Richter opposed. Move on to E four, twenty-twenty-five Public Notification Evacuation Replanting Grant. I'll move the recommendation seconded by councillor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on E four? Councillor Richter?
Yes, I'm really pleased to see staff continuing to apply to as many different grant sources as are available out there. I just had a question on this one, and I'll probably ask the same question on the next three motions. Have we received any grants previously from this organization? And what are our chances of success in getting it?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, we have seen several grants historically from the U B C M, which is Union British Columbia Municipalities. The chances of success are likely high in these grant applications as staff usually do proceed when we do at least meet the criterias that require us to be eligible for an application.
Okay, thank you.
Call the question on E four. That carries unanimously. E five, twenty-twenty-five Transit Related Road Infrastructure Program Grant Application. Moved by councillor Rint, seconded by councillor Pratt. Is there any discussion on E five? Councillor Richter?
Yeah, same question as before. How successful have we been with previous grants from Coast Mountain Bus Company?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, we have received grants in the past from Coast Mountain Bus Company.
Okay, thank you.
Call the question on E five. That carries unanimously. E six, twenty-twenty-five Active Transportation Fund Grant Application. I will move it, seconded by councillor Pratt. Is there any discussion, councillor Pratt?
Thank you, worship. Through yourself to staff, I was curious if they could comment, recognizing the fact that we are undertaking a transportation strategy update. Wondering if you could speak to past plans? And was there any plan or has there been plans to extend the multi-use paths along Eighty-eighth from Fort Langley to Walnut Grove to have a continuous path? And is that anticipated to be included in the upcoming update as well?
Mr. Cooner?
Through your worship, we'll be looking at that corridor through the transportation mobility strategy.
Thank you.
There's no current plans to extend past where councils asked us to take this sidewalk and multi-use path.
Okay, perfect, that's good to know. Thank you.
Councillor Richter?
Yeah, this is a nice, robust grant of a million dollars if we can get it. Again, I would like to know if we've been successful with Communities Canada before for grants of this nature.
Dear worship to councillor Richter, we have been successful historically in grants with Communities Canada and in the past, and for this one particularly, we are confident we'd be able to meet the requirements on the eligibility cost.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Kunst?
Yeah, I just have a question. How do these streets or whatever qualify? Like, how do we decide that Eighty-eighth and Wright get to have this nice opportunity? So what's the, what's the, how does that, how does that happen?
Dear worship to councillor Kunst, when grant applications are open, there are several criterias we have to take into consideration to qualify. More particularly for this one, this project involves installation of multi-use pathways, sidewalks, bus stop improvements, and street lighting. So therefore, the Eightieth Avenue project between Wright Street and Glover Road was the qualifying project that we would proceed forward for an application.
All right, thank you.
Call the question on E six. That carries unanimously. Item E seven, I'm going to move the second paragraph. Is there a second or seconded by councillor Rint? Is there any discussion on the second paragraph, option two? Councillor Ferguson?
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good idea to move quicker than to initiate consultation. I think the folks do want to see some action on this. We do have a great event, the Cruzean during the year, and there's other clubs that have show and shine at high schools and other events that are orderly and otherwise people don't want people racing or using expensive cars and, you know, causing havoc in the neighborhood and things like that. So I think it's important to have these rumble strips in place. And from what I understand by discussions with other members of council that know about these strips, they're easily maneuvered by fire trucks and police cars and ambulance. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Richter?
Two questions on this one. Number one, the funding source. And number two, will we be seeking input, public input on this? Thirty rumble strips are quite a significant number. And I'm just wondering what the people who work in Gloucester might have to say about it.
The funding source is actually identified in the motion itself, existing funding from the twenty-twenty-five Traffic Calming Capital Project, which is about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, included in the twenty-twenty-five budget, if so adopted today. Mr. Cooner, anything else on the second question?
With respect to the second question, we, council has proceeded or has moved the motion in relation to foregoing the community ballot process. So therefore, we, the residents, we have taken into consideration residents or any concerns with the business owners. But with respect to the actual community ballot or public consultation process, we will be foregoing that in the event that is successful.
Is it a good idea to forego the petition process? I understand that we probably want to move on getting these in as quickly as possible, but still, there's a lot of businesses up there. businesses up there.
Yeah, I mean, whether it's a good idea or not, I think is for council to determine and whether it's successful or not. Counselor Bailey, go ahead.
I'm strongly in favor of moving this forward. These strips are the least bothersome to large vehicles, and that includes first responders responding in fire vehicles. But I don't want to delay anything. I want to get going. The police are at great peril because of the events up there. And speaking to some of the constables and that, that were involved in the last situation up there, I do not want to take any chances or slow anything down that is going to help, especially the police, but first responders in, in all aspects of this. This is something that needs to be done for both public safety and especially for the first responders.
Counselor Martins?
Thank you. As you, many of you are aware, in January, a crowd swarmed Langley RCMP at an illegal street racing event in Gloucester. And in the words of Superintendent Dossage, "Not only is this incident extremely concerning from a public safety perspective, but the fact that these youth believed it was okay to obstruct police officers and the lawful execution of their duties isn't acceptable. Street racers put the public and police at significant risk." An example of this mob mentality from my experience as police officer was this 2011 Stanley Cup Riot. And it's hard to put into words what I witnessed that night. Everyday citizens, hockey fans, who got caught up in a mob mentality that turned into a riot with numerous injuries, vehicles set on fire, businesses broken into. It was utter chaos. Four million dollars in damage. The hospital operated under Code Orange, their mass casualty protocol. I want to thank the township staff for a practical solution to prevent a mob that puts our police officers and our community in danger. I want to thank our staff for doing this report collaboratively with the RCMP, who could provide the officer's safety context. Police officers willingly put their lives online every day. They walk into the unknown, face unpredictable dangers, and make split-second decisions that could mean the difference between life and death, not just for themselves, but for the people they have sworn to protect. It is a level of courage and sacrifice that few truly understand, yet our communities depend on it every single day. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the Langley RCMP for showing up again and again, and I am heartened that the township is working with the RCMP to mitigate the potential chaos.
Now, the speakers, I'll call the question on second option under E seven. That carries unanimously. E eight, capital request for stolen equipment replacements, moved by Counselor Rint, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Is there any discussion on E eight? Counselor Richter?
Well, I note that we get ICBC funds of about a third of what we need to replace this equipment. So I just had a question through you to staff. Have measures been put in place to make sure that stealing equipment like this in the future is not going to happen or be possible?
Counselor?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, staff will be looking at options to prevent or mitigate any further thefts, whether that's being more cognitive of where they park the vehicles, or whether that is in relation to access points that expose the vehicles to being stolen.
Okay. And also, going forward, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but I think we should, I should raise it. Is it possible in our ICBC insurance policies to somehow get replacement cost in there, not depreciated cost?
The staff can review that with, with our insurance provider and see if there's any possibilities to have any replacement vehicles costs recovered.
Okay. And, yeah, I think the policy probably just has to state replacement costs. Can council get a report back on that? Do I need to put a motion on that?
Yeah, I think we have on with the budget, third reading, fleet policy is actually under review by council. So that could be considered as part of that process. I think there's a presentation, Mr. Cooner, in the work plan regarding fleet coming up at some point, some report in regards to that review of fleet that council has requested.
Yes, that is correct, your worship. However, usually when we do fleet reviews, we wouldn't really go into the nitty-gritty of providing insurance policies of what it covers. So that may, we can potentially consider that at that time in that report to highlight the policies and the pros and cons potentially of the current policy we have.
And then looking for additional levels of coverage would be an increase to property taxes, I would assume.
If there's any financial implication or increased cost, then we would have to look at general revenue to potentially cover that.
So Counselor Richter, I would suggest maybe a motion if you're really looking for that level of detail to be added.
Can I put a motion on?
Can we dispose of the recommendation first?
Certainly.
Okay, and come back to you. Counselor Kunst, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. Do we have GPS installed on most of our equipment?
Dear, dear worship to Counselor Kunst, yes, we do have GPS installed on most of our equipment. But these two equipment in particular, John Deere tractors or flat-deck trailer, don't historically usually have GPS installed. But actual vehicles, most of them will have the GPS systems.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So we'll call the question on E eight. Counselor Richter? That carries unanimously. So I'm going to go back to you, Counselor Richter. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that staff investigate replacement cost insurance policies as part of the upcoming fleet review process.
Is there a second to that? Not seeing, seconded by Counselor Martins. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Richter.
I just think that this might be something worth investigating. And if it can be done as part of another study that's currently underway, then I would suggest and think it would be prudent for us to look at that.
All right, Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, just a quick question. Are we not, through, through the chair of staff, are we not doing this already, if I may?
Dear worship to Counselor Ferguson, I would assume that staff in, in risk management, would we look in at the best policies available for the township as a whole that would benefit us?
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't see a reason for have the staff, they're busy enough as it is chasing after other things, or they're already doing it. So I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on, on that emotion? Nope, seeing none. Call the question on that motion under E eight. And that's defeated with Counselor Martins, Counselor Pratt, Counselor Rint, Mayor Woodward, Counselor Bailey, Counselor Ferguson opposed. Let's move on to item E nine, capital request from McLeod Athletic Park. Is anybody wish to move the recommendation? Moved by Counselor Rint, seconded by Counselor Bailey. Counselor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And in the report, I apologize to staff if I missed it, but through yourself to staff, would the funding envelope that we see here for engineering design, would that be enough to include in the future design when it comes back to us, things like sidewalks, like multi-use paths? I understand that it might be difficult to accommodate dedicated bike lanes, since there's going to be street parking on both sides at some point. So I'm just curious if any pedestrian or cycling infrastructure is going to be included in the design, since I didn't see it outlined in the report.
Dear worship to Counselor Pratt, no, that would not be included in the design. We'd require direction from council, and we do anticipate a further cost in relation to those items.
And we anticipate a further cost just in the, in terms of the design envelope, not actually in the implementation?
That is correct. With respect to design, to take into consideration multi-use pathways, sidewalks, and additional items, we would essentially then be expanding the scope of the design itself. So there would be a cost item associated with it.
Am I allowed another follow-up, your worship, on that one?
Hey, of course. So with the current plan, as it stands in the design that would come back to, to council, what would be theoretically the ultimate design that we see? Are we still just going to see a shoulder into a ditch, but with a widened roadway to permit more parking? Is that the idea?
So
Go ahead.
With respect to the design, to your worship, to your Counselor Pratt, we'd be looking at just the roadway widenings and some drainage modifications and just capacity for additional parking. And the focus would also be on looking at the utilities, relocating them underground as well.
Okay, thank you. Personally, I'd like to see at least sidewalks put in along this stretch, at least this portion that's near LSS, in between the LSS and the church. I think it'd be prudent, just based on how many people are walking through that area at all times to have sidewalks as part of the design, at the very least, not knowing exactly how much that would increase the cost of the design envelope at this stage, and not wanting to delay anything if BC Hydro was a part of it. I'm not sure what the best course of action here is. So potentially looking to yourself, your worship, or staff. So give me a few moments to consider that while others speak, because I think I may, I may have a solution for, for expanding the scope, but allowing the project to move ahead at the same time. Counselor Richter, go ahead.
Yes. So the $590,000 it's contemplated here is for design only? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So what will the total cost of this project be?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, to determine the, the total cost of the project would be premature at this stage. Obviously, staff won't be in a position to estimate a cost until we have a design before us to estimate.
Okay. But if you're paying, you know, basically almost $600,000 for a, a design, then presumably we're talking about a multimillion dollar project.
Counselor, I believe that's, that would come out of the design, but I believe it is anticipated to be more than a million dollars, from what I understand.
Yes, if we would anticipate it being more than the design cost, so it would be approximately a million dollars or more.
Or more.
Right, yes.
Okay. And when would we have this design and costing, project costing relative to it?
Counselor, do we have a timeline?
Don't have a timeline right now. We do anticipate that the design will take several months. Once the design is complete, we would come forward to council for further directions or advising of the construction options that are available.
So would that be in this year, 2025, we'll have the design?
Staff are confident we should have the design done within 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, I'm in favor of going ahead on this, because to me, it's a, got very significant safety factors to it. Proposed lighting, especially in the November, December, January time, when we've got the shorter days, you know, you're right at LSS there. And I, I think looking after people with better lighting in an area, and also with the expansion of the parking. The parking will hopefully lessen people crossing around, jaywalking, crossing roads unsafely and all that. So I view this as a safety issue and, and fully supportive of having a look at, at what it's, how it's going to roll out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kunst?
Yeah, I mean, looking at it, looks like the proposed parking expansions on the south end of one of the baseball diamonds. Have we, well, I guess part of this expansion will be communicating with the Willoughby Slow Pitch and all the baseball people, because I'm just concerned that might be digging into where people hit the ball. So anyway, just one of those observations that I made here, so.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you. Anything and everything we can do to promote and expand parking and other uses at McLeod Athletic Park is important, because it is a gem of a park to the township of Langley. And on some events, we get an awful lot of people showing up and for many, many different reasons. So I think that it's a great opportunity here. It has to be done. And as I say, it's a gem of a park, and we've come a long way since the McLeod family donated some land for us. Thank you.
So I, I think, Mr. Cooner, also the, the background to this and in the report is that BC Hydro is moving ahead with potentially upgrading those, the capacity of those transmission lines with our, with layman's terms, orphaned on both sides, not under, that are undergrounded on both sides. But there's this overhead in the middle. Seems like a one-time opportunity to potentially bury those or have them entrenched above ground for a very long time at a very significant cost?
That is correct, your worship. They'll be installing new duck banks and upgrades on the existing overhead connectors along, I believe, 58th, 57th, 214th A and 213th A as well.
And if this project's not proceeded with those additional capacity that'd be placed above ground and further entrenching these overhead utilities, which aren't connected on either side?
That is correct. And then if we do look at the project at a later date as well, that would potentially increase the cost associated with it as well.
So I think it's good to get council the option at least. So go back to Counselor Pratt. I do have a suggestion, which I, I think is, is a good one, if you're, if you're open to moving it. It would be to make an amendment such that required to advance on-street parking expansion, multi-use paths, sidewalks, and general walkability improvements as may be possible, street lighting and undergrounding of existing overhead utilities. That would be an amendment if you wish to move it.
I'd move that, but that's within the current funding envelope?
I have a, I'll speak to that after. If you move the amendment.
Yeah, I would so move.
Yeah, I'll second it. So Counselor Pratt, do you wish to speak to it at all? Go ahead.
I just think that the reality is, is that with the baseball diamond parking the way it is, with the street parking proposed where it is, we would actually see without incorporating side rocks and official crosswalks, we would see an increase, or at least a status quo level of jaywalking in the area, especially when we have events like in the future, if we have track and field events at the Langley event, at the McLeod Athletic Park, Canada Day events. So I think it'd be great to incorporate the street parking, as well as find a way to make sure that the pedestrians are getting to a crosswalk properly and appropriately.
Yeah. So, Mr. Cooner, I support it. Just given I seconded it. I think it's possible that it can, staff can look at the design funding available here and determine if they need a little bit of a top-up. They can put an item for information on, and council can consider it that way, if that's a little top-up is necessary to deal with the expanded scope. But meanwhile, council could endorse the amendment or not, and then endorse the project or not, so staff could begin working on it.
Yes, your worship, that could be an avenue we can explore, that the amendment is made and the direction is given for staff to work on it. And if further funds are required that, then we can come forward to council. Staff do, as we're going through this exercise, anticipate it would be 60,000 to 80,000 approximately for the sidewalk design and the multi-use pedestrian pathways, which may potentially be able to be absorbed, absorbed in operational budget as well.
And I would hesitate to make an amendment to any of the numbers, because staff would need to confirm which, which funding sources may be an option for that addition.
That's correct.
So you can come back to us with something if it's required.
Yeah, and this will give us enough flexibility.
Great. So that's the amendment. I'll call the question on the amendment. That carries unanimously. Now back to the main motion as amended. Counselor Pratt, did you have anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
That's it. So call the question on E nine as amended. That carries unanimously. Move on to E ten, DCC fronting agreement. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on E ten? Counselor Richter?
Yes. On page 19, I noted that costs are estimated at 19.3 million dollars. Now, that estimated cost, does it have contingencies built into it, or is it likely to increase at this stage?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, there is contingencies built into it. We do receive the engineer's cost estimate, which does include a contingency.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, call the question on E ten. That carries unanimously. Move on to item E 11, telecommunications tower application number 000012. I'll move the first paragraph, not to object, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on 11A? Counselor Akust.
When can we get one in South Langley?
It might need a few, more than one. Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to make note in the report that the proposed tower and its location and the lease terms don't prohibit future use of the transit exchange for other uses or for improved uses. So appreciate staff working with the proponent on a good lease term.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I just had a question through you to staff, and I know it's not really our final decision to make. But this seems like an awfully high tower at over 100 feet. And I'm just wondering, will the public have an opportunity to have input at some point?
Counselor?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, currently, when it comes to telecommunications tower applications, they have to be compliant with the telecommunications towers policies. And within the policy itself, section 3.4 states that there needs to be public notice and consultation. So more specifically with this application, there was information package and letter of intent sent out to neighboring properties. There was an ad in the newspaper as well, and appeared where residents could provide their comments and concerns to the township. And that is attached, I believe, as an attachment CRD to the report to council before you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, I lived right beside a very similar, very similar facility in Surrey. And at first, I had some And at first, I had some misgivings about it. It turned out that over the years that I was there, he was the best neighbor I ever had. About twice a year, someone would come, you'd hear him climbing up and down there. Other than that, they didn't throw parties, they didn't have loud music or anything like that. He was a great neighbor. I'm strongly in favor of this.
Seeing no other discussion, I'll call the question on 11A.
Counselor Richter?
That carries unanimously. Item E12, development permit application number 101477. Moved by Counselor Pratt, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on E12? Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the stewardship groups up in that area have had an opportunity to have input. I know that in the bylaw that's coming up on page 13, it says that input has been obtained. But I'm just wondering if the stewardship groups in particular have had input?
Through your worship to Counselor Richter, the opportunity for public input would have been through the neighborhood plan consultation and adoption process, as well as a number of years ago, the updates to the township's schedule in the OCP bylaw, which pertains to stream-side items.
Okay, so we haven't heard any discontent from the stewardship groups, I guess, is the question I'm really asking. Do they do a lot of work up there?
Thank you. Through your worship, Counselor Richter, that's correct. No.
Okay, thank you.
That'll call the question on E12. That carries unanimously. Item E13, development permit application number 101465. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on E13? Thanks. Call the question on E13. Counselor Martins? That carries unanimously. Bylaws for first, second, and third reading, highway closure, dedication, removal, and disposal bylaw, bylaw number 6081, 6082. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Is there any discussion on G1? Seeing none, call the question on G1. That carries unanimously. Item G2, rezoning application number 100690, bylaw number 6101. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on G2? Seeing none, call the question on G2. That carries unanimously. G3, 2025 Utilities Rates bylaw, bylaw number 6107, 6102, 6103, 6104, and 6112. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on G3? Seeing none, call the question on G3. Oh, sorry, hold on a second. I'm going to go back. Ms. Bauer, I believe staff did request an amendment, so I'll bring that up, please. I'm not quite technical enough to write this amendment on my own. Yeah, so I'll move that, seconded by Counselor Rint. Give counsel a moment to read that. Also, maybe, Mr. Cooner, you or staff can want to explain roughly what this is. Disappeared, though. It's not on the screen anymore. There it is. So through your worship, this is to allow for billing at a tiered rate. So for what we initially looked at was 500 cubic meters of water per year would be paid at a lower rate, and everything over would be an additional rate, which is listed within the report. Our current software has some limitations on this type of billing. So what we're looking at here, it would be, because we're going to tri-annual billing, so it would still be the 500 cubic meters per year, but it would be prorated at 167 cubic meters per billing period. That you would be at tier one, and then above 167, you would be at tier two. And when we go to quarterly, then that would break out to, it would be 125 cubic meters per billing period. Any questions about the amendment? No, I'll go to Counselor Ferguson. Ms. Ferguson?
Oh, yeah, just a quick question, if I may, through the chair. This is relating to a single-family, multiple-family, and it's also on folks that are on the metered water system, if I may?
Ms. Cooner?
Through your worship to Counselor Ferguson, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you. So just on the amendment to G3. That carries with Counselor Richter opposed. Now back to the main motion, as I mentioned. Counselor Koest?
Yeah, so I have a question about the voluntary water metering. If, say, for example, we have thousands of people that now want to do the water metering, and it turns out that they're paying less money because they're not using as much money, does that increase the amount of money that we have to pay for water generally? Because now we have less people paying the broader amount? Does that make sense?
Ms. Cooner?
Will it increase the amount of money that people who are not on the voluntary water meter will increase their amount that they would have to pay? Like, I'm just wondering the impact of the voluntary water metering.
We pay water usage on a water usage basis, so we would be purchasing less water. So there's a variable component that would decrease our costs.
Okay.
So just for clarification purposes, through your worship to Counselor Koest, are you saying in relation to the township or residents?
Yeah, residents. So if a whole bunch of residents decide now where they're going to reap the benefits of not having to pay as much for water because they're on a metered, does the township then, will that increase the amount because we're still taking the same amount of water in, or, you know, how does that actually work? If everyone goes on a metered water system?
Yeah, so if they go on a metered water system, essentially, they'll be paying for the meter itself and the usage. So whatever usage of water resident is using, they would be paying on that. And the township itself pays for a usage as well. So if there's, and that, as Ms. Ruff has highlighted, is a variable aspect every year, depending on how much usage the township of water is being consumed as well.
Okay, so it won't really make a difference at the end of the day. It'll just make a difference to the people doing the voluntary water metering.
Yes, so if people are using less waters, they would be paying less amount compared to the flat fee that they're paying right now.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, I'll call the question on G3 as amended. That carries, Counselor Richter opposed. G4. Okay. Ms. Bauer, do you have that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, great. So this is G4, Langley Fees and Charges bylaw amendment, bylaw number 6111, 6099. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion? I'll be moving deferral of this, if there's any, like before, there's any discussion, to the next council meeting. Is there any other discussion? Nope, okay, I'll move deferral of G4 to March 10th, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, call the question on deferral. That carries unanimously with Counselor Richter absent. Mr. Rule, could you get Counselor Richter back, please? Good, so move on to bylaws for final adoption, drainage development works agreement bylaw, bylaw number 6083. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion, questions on I1? Seeing none, call the question on I1. That carries unanimously. And move on to I2, Langley 2025, 2029, five-year financial plan bylaw, bylaw number 6105, 6106. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Bailey. Is there any discussion, questions on I2? Counselor Ferguson?
I had discussions, I believe, either with yourself or staff regarding the Brookswood Senior Center, if I may.
Yeah, so I appreciate you raising that. This wouldn't be the time to do that. It wouldn't be an amendment to the bylaw. It would be a subsequent motion for counsel to consider funding that within the envelopes available.
Okay, I know that I had discussions with them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion on I2? Seeing none, call the question on I2. That carries with Counselor Richter opposed. Just want to pause here for a moment. Mr. Cooner, thank you and your staff for the 2025 budget process. I know there was a lot of work that went into it, especially in regards to Metro Vancouver, the voluntary water metering program, setting the rates, and a number of other significant work that went into the budget to get it where it is with all of the things that are in there. So again, thank you very much to yourself, Ms. Ruff, and all the teams here at the township that participated in putting that together for counsel. All right, thank you. So Ms. Bauer, I had an additional motion, something that I neglected and forgot to add at third reading, which I'd like to now fund within the envelopes available in 2025, and have counsel could at least consider that.
I'm sorry, we didn't get that one. If you could just send it, I'll take care of that.
Let's see where it is. Yes. So did I have it sent in my mind as opposed to actually sent? Yes. Okay, so I'm going to try to read this out, or I can try to take a moment. Why don't we take, what are we at now, anyway? 3 o'clock? Why don't we take preemptive recess for five minutes, and I'll get that to you?
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Where's Mr. Cooner? Let's get going here. Okay, we'll reconvene. Ms. Bauer, can you bring that up, please? Okay, so I'll move that. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on those? Give counsel a few seconds here to read it. These were projects outlined within the budget. The second one is not. That was specifically requested by them. Okay, so I'll call for a question on that motion, I2. That carries unanimously. And move on here. I3, rezoning application number 100764, bylaw number 6013. Moved by Counselor Pratt, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on I3, rezoning bylaw? None, so call the question on I3. Counselor Richter? That carries unanimously. An motion to adopt the development permit, development permit 101432, moved by Counselor Rint. Mr. Cooner?
We typically haven't done preapprovals in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. One motion and one comment in regards to N one, the wifi monitor for the Derek Double D Arboretum. Myself, and I'm sure other members of council have heard from several community groups how crucial it would be to continue to expand the use of the Rotary Interpretive Centre there if they had wifi. And reading the report, I'd just like to move that $9,000 be approved for use from the council contingency fund in order to retain a network and internet services consultant, as outlined in the report, in order to get a full picture of potential capital and operating costs associated with bringing modern information technology facilities to the Rotary Interpretive Centre at the Derek Double D Arboretum.
Yeah, is there a second to that? I'll second it. Go ahead, councillor Pratt.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I think the reality is that we have a council contingency fund that's been topped up again, and that there are enough community groups that use Rotary Interpretive Centre that could definitely benefit from having the wifi there, as well as a proper monitor. And that I'd be very curious to see what the actual costs associated with bringing those to the facility would be. And I think that having a proper consultant outline it for us would be helpful.
Councillor Richter?
So just wanted to get a clarification on this. So we're voting to get a report on paying a note of council contingency?
I believe that was outlined as an option in the memo.
Okay. And is it the 16K, the 330K, or the 3.2K?
Councillor Pratt, go ahead. I turned it on and then you turned it off, so go ahead, councillor Pratt.
Thank you. Yeah, the motion was to take 9,000 from the council contingency. The second to last paragraph, or the third to last paragraph of the report outlines, and the words are, "A budget envelope of $9,000 would be required to engage a network and internet services consultant to investigate all possible alternatives and determine more accurate capital and operating costs for each option." That $9,000 is what I'm looking to spend from the council contingency fund to get a more robust outline of each option and what they would cost.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Martins?
Thank you. I have a question with regards to N four, 2024 Holiday Lights in Williams Park.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor, so we can come back to that. Yeah. Is there anything on the motion itself?
No.
No. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion for N one. Matt Carries with councillor Richter opposed. Councillor Richter, go ahead.
Well, I think councillor Martins was ahead of me. I wanted to raise another item, but not.
Go ahead, councillor Martins. You had a request to speak there. Go ahead. Yeah. Councillor Richter, go ahead.
Floor now?
You do, councillor Richter. Go ahead.
Well, I thought councillor Martins was ahead of me.
Yeah, she's requested to speak, and she's after you.
Okay. I had a question on N six. And it says that dredging Bedford Channel and stockpiling it on land is 2.5 million. Otherwise, it would be 6 million for sea disposal. So I guess the question that I have is where do we go from here? I mean, this is, clearly we've heard from First Nations, we've heard from user groups up there, we've heard from residents, that the channel is in urgent need of dredging. I think we need to take some action on it. So where are we going with this now?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, staff will continue to essentially advance the engineering and environmental studies and obtain the necessary permits required for the Bedford Channel dredging. That's, and we will liaison with the Quandlin First Nations representative. And when we have either a funding source identified or council direction to fund the project, then we will proceed accordingly.
Okay. So are we looking at footing this 2.5 million on our own with no help from other levels of government?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, we're looking at several different avenues, provincial, federal, or even regional at a metro level, that if there's any funding sources available. And as noted in the report, we've looked at various municipalities that have experienced, or have gone through this as well dredging, and see if there's any other suggestions available to us.
Okay. And how soon will we have an idea on this? Because, I mean, every year for the last couple of years, if not three or four years, I know I've been being contacted, I'm sure other members of council are being contacted as well, about the desperate need to dredge this channel. Like, will we be getting something back this year? I guess is the question I'm asking.
Yes, it's a good question, councillor Richter. The, once we do hear and receive our studies, our environmental engineering studies, and we receive the necessary approvals, we will be coming forward to council and advising council that we receive these approvals and then seeking further direction at that time.
Okay. Is there a way we can fast-track the approval process, or so that we could have a better idea, at least by the end of this year, whether or not dredging will occur in 2026?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, staff are prioritizing this project, going through the necessary steps to make the applications. However, there can be a suggestion from staff to the elected officials, potentially communicating with different levels of government, provincial, federal, to put either political pressure as well to assist us with our approval process.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Martins?
Thank you. 2024 Holiday Lights in Williams Park, N four. I have a question, if I may, through the chair of staff. The operating budget, the base operating budget is $110,000. And then I see later, after that information on the second page, it talks about, because the 2024 event featured all new lights and decorations, it required additional setup time, and difficult to estimate the exact cost of this, but we expect it to be quicker in 2025. So I guess my question is, I believe previously it was approximately 25,000 was the investment, when it used to be operated by a third party, that we committed in our staff time. Do we know how much of the operating budget went towards staff resources, not including this overage that's mentioned?
Mr. Cooner? I believe the memo has done the best it can. I mean, these aren't really specifically tracked?
Yes, when it comes to if there's certain items where staff just spend a couple hours at the event and stuff, that's not usually tracked, and that's hard to manage. If there's any substantial amount of time, that is tracked. So therefore, if it's not highlighted in the memo, that would be some hours associated, a couple hours with staff time.
Okay, because we seem to know previously that it was approximately $25,000 for staff to do the setup and takedown.
It was actually 75, councillor Martins.
Sorry, okay, 75,000, yeah.
Yes, so. Clear for everybody watching, it was $75,000, not $25,000. Go ahead, councillor.
I apologize. I think more importantly is we seem to be able to track staff time before, and I'm just wondering what the difference is here.
Dear worship to councillor Martins, historically, staff time, more substantial staff time was required to assist with the event. At this time, that the amount of staff time has decreased that was required to assist with the event.
All right. And were staff just involved in the setup and takedown, or were they involved in the day-to-day while the event was open?
Through worship to councillor Martins, a lot of the services here, as highlighted in here, were contracted services. And a lot of the equipment itself, as well, was operated and rented through third parties.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I also think it's important, Mr. Cooner, to highlight that the event ran for a number of additional days as well. So per day, I think, would be an interesting comparison if council wants to go over this again and again. Councillor Ferguson, go ahead.
Well, mine was to do more with the dredging again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I did, if I may, through a chair of staff. We put the application in for the dredging how long ago, and we paid for the permits and things like that, proceeding accordingly. I'm not sure if the permit's the right way, the process, if I may.
Through your worship, we, in collaboration with Quandlin First Nations, we applied for the land tenure replacement application for the dredging, and that was last March, so 2024. And we're working on the necessary studies and assessments for a Water Sustainability Act approval application, which we plan to apply for in the spring of 2025.
Yeah, if I may, also supplemental, we have met with Quandlin, and we didn't have, unfortunately, we didn't have our staff there. And I know they have a subsequent meeting coming up. I'm sure, hopefully, that'll be changed, because I believe it's this Friday. And I guess they're kind of, they're challenged, as many of us are challenged, because we want to see it dredged as well. It's just that the price of us and also being a non, kind of municipal item, it's more of a provincial item. Have you or your staff been notified to the meeting this Friday, if I may, through a chair?
Through your worship, yes. I will be in attendance with one of our drainage engineers.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you very much indeed.
Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to highlight N three, the public feedback on the budget, the draft budget that was recently approved, the bylaw. And I just wanted to highlight how the number one listed priority of the public who responded to the survey was transportation in streets. And when you drill down into a line-by-line observation of what people were looking to see prioritized, active transportation came up, as I believe the majority of respondents wanting to see continued investment in that. So just wanted to thank the public for their participation, and wanted to thank the community groups that were involved in getting people's feedback for this budget. So appreciate it.
Any other discussion or questions on N one through 10?
Yeah, me.
Councillor Van Popta, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Could I just get a clarification through your worship to staff, based on what councillor Ferguson was just saying in regards to another meeting this Friday? Was that a staff to Quandlin meeting, or is that council?
Mr. Cooner?
Through your worship, that's staff attending the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cooner, do you want to clarify that? Just want to, maybe, Mr. Cooner, maybe you can clarify that. I think all members of council were invited.
Yes, your worship. I believe, my understanding is there's an invite sent to all members of council potentially, and there's a separate invite for staff as well in relation to the upcoming meeting on Friday.
Sorry, could I get that invite sent? No, I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, there has been some interesting back and forth around how these meetings are being requested and scheduled, but I'm trying to work through that. Councillor, Mr. Cooner, you can make sure council's doubly notified of this on Friday?
Yes, I will have that invite resent to all the mayor and council.
Councillor Van Popta, anything else? No? All right. Move on to other business, P one. I'll move it. Is there a second? Or seconded by councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on P one? Councillor Richter?
Yeah. Not that I disagree it's time to revisit this. I think previous councils have looked at pieces of it over the years, but I'm not sure we've done a comprehensive review of it. But I'm just wondering what the costs of this master plan would be, and will the plan include some sort of estimate of park allocations, both operating and land costs, and particularly in the Willoughby and Brookswood areas going forward?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship to councillor Richter, in the event that staff assess the items that are proposed, more than likely will be an internal master plan. That's done by staff internally, is what I meant. Therefore, the cost associated would just be standard cost. In the event we do require external consultants, then we can come before council to request any funding source.
Okay. And then the there, the therefores have four items listed, but I really don't see much in the way of Brookswood needs identified in there. So will Brookswood needs, is the intent to include discussion around Brookswood? I mean, if we're making a plan from 2025 to 2040, I think we should be looking at Brookswood.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. It doesn't mention Bonner Grove specifically, doesn't mention Murrayville specifically, doesn't mention Salmon River specifically, or other communities like the rural areas. So I think the intent is to highlight some items, and this is why it's worded to be amended or expanded for the presentation. I think it's key to note that it is for staff to present to council and review this potential scope and even add to it at that time. I believe Brookswood is referenced specifically under the whereas number six, where Brookswood is fortunate to be adjacent to one of the largest regional parks in the region. Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'm really excited to see this on the agenda. I wholeheartedly support the agenda.
coming up, I'm sure, I'm not, hopefully that'll be changed, 'cause I believe it's this Friday. And, um, I guess they're kind of, uh, they're challenged, as many of us are challenged, 'cause we want to see it, um, dredged as well, it's just it's, um, the price of us, and also being a non, kind of municipal, um, uh, item, it's more of a provincial item. Have you or your staff been notified to the meeting this Friday, if I may, through a chair?
Through your worship, yes, I, I will be in attendance with one of our drainage engineers.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you very much indeed.
Councilor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to highlight, N3, the, uh, the public feedback on the, the budget, the draft budget that was recently, uh, approved, the bylaw. And I just wanted to, to highlight, uh, how the number-one listed priority of the public who, uh, responded to the, the survey was transportation and streets. And when you drill down into a line-by-line observation of what people were, uh, looking to see prioritized, active transportation came up, uh, as I believe the majority of respondents wanting to see continued investment in that. So just wanted to thank the public for their participation, and wanted to thank the community groups that were, uh, involved in getting people's feedback for this budget. So appreciate it.
Any other discussion or questions on N1 through 10?
Yeah, me.
Councilor, uh, Councilor Van Popta, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, could I just get a clarification through your worship to staff, based on what Councilor Ferguson was just saying in regards to another meeting this Friday? Was that a staff to Quantlin meeting, or is that council?
Mr. Coonan?
Through your worship, that's staff attending the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coonan, do you want to clarify that? Yeah, just want to, maybe, Mr. Coonan, maybe you can clarify that. I think all members, all members of council were invited.
Yes, your worship, I believe, my understanding is there's an invite sent to all members of council potentially, and there's a separate invite for staff as well, uh, in relation to the upcoming meeting on Friday.
Sorry, could I get that invite sent? No, I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, there has been, uh, some interesting back-and-forth around how these meetings are being requested and scheduled, but I'm trying to work through that. Councilor, Mr. Coonan, you can make sure council's doubly notified of this on Friday?
Yes, I, I will have that invite resent to all American council.
Councilor Van Popta, anything else? No, all right. Move on to other business, P1, I'll move it. Is there a second or seconded by Councilor Bailey? Is there any discussion on P1? Councilor Richter?
Yeah, um, not that I disagree, it's time to revisit this. I think previous councils have looked at pieces of it over the years, but I'm not sure we've done a comprehensive review of it. But I'm just wondering what the, the costs of this master plan would be? And will the plan include some sort of estimate of park allocations, both operating and land costs, and particularly in the Willoughby and Brookswood areas going forward?
Mr. Coonan?
Through your worship to Councilor Richter, in the event that staff assess, uh, the items that are proposed, uh, more than likely will be an internal, uh, master plan. That's done by staff internally is what I meant. Therefore, the costs associated would just be standard cost. It's, in the event we do require, uh, external consultants, then we can come, uh, before council, uh, to request any funding source.
Okay, and then the there, uh, the, the therefores, um, have four items listed, but I really don't see much in the way of Brookswood needs identified in there. So will Brookswood needs, is the intent to include discussion around Brookswood? I mean, if we're making a plan from twenty twenty-five to twenty forty, I think we should be looking at Brookswood.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. Uh, it doesn't mention, um, Bonner Grove specifically, doesn't mention Murrayville specifically, doesn't mention Salmon River specifically, or, um, other communities like the rural areas. So I think the intent is to highlight some items, and this is why it's worded to be amended or expanded for the presentation. I think it's key to note that it is for staff to present to council and review this potential scope, and even add to it at that time. I believe Brookswood is referenced specifically under the whereas number six, where Brookswood is fortunate to be adjacent to one of the largest regional parks in the region. Councilor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'm, I'm really excited to see this on the agenda. I wholeheartedly support the intent and, and look forward to the presentation. I think the reality is that, uh, as we have built Willoughby and have asked thousands of people to live without their own backyard, uh, finding a way to, to give the public a meaningfully natural backyard in Willoughby that's transit accessible, that's walkable, that's accessible by bike and all forms of transportation is going to be key. Look forward to figuring out exactly how we're going to do it, where it's going to be, uh, but I'm excited to see what the future is going to hold for not just Willoughby, but Brookswood as it expands and develops, and how we can make sure that all of our communities are treated equitably, and really looking forward to seeing this proceed.
Councilor Bailey?
Yeah, uh, again, to Brookswood, I'm also, uh, wondering about Horn Pit. Is that going to be included in there? That's a significant, um, resource.
Yeah, I believe council's endorsed the Horn Pit View Park, as you remember. So Horn Pit is underway as designated park space within the updated Fernridge Community Plan. I believe that would be considered along with the Parks Master Plan, but Parks Master Plan being that it can capture all of these amenities that are either existing or already proceeding.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilor Martins?
Thank you, um, yeah, I support this. I, just a question with, after the therefore section, an inventory of the needed neighborhood and community parks within the urban and developing areas projected, um, could we also include an inventory of the municipal parks in this? I know you said it's, um, intended, it's not limiting, so it's out of-
Mr. Coonan, I believe that that's specifically left out because it's referenced in another whereas, but also, um, specifically relating to a municipal park in Willoughby under item six. So then there's no contemplation of municipal parks within the parkland acquisition program, that's why it's not included.
So it's not part of the inventory?
Mr. Coonan, perhaps you answered better than I did?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So currently, um, there is, um, an inventory of neighborhood and community parks with respect to municipal parks. We don't have one that's clearly identified as a municipal park, and I think in sections, uh, or paragraph six here, it says that, uh, there'd be a signature municipal park allocated potentially in, in the Willoughby area. And I think what the, his worship was referring to is that, under the current DCC programs we have, our neighborhood acquisition parkland, uh, there's certain definitions that need to qualify for us to acquire, um, these neighborhood parks or these community and, and parks as well. And therefore, sometimes the municipal park definition, or municipal parks don't fit under that definition.
Thank you.
Councilor Ferguson?
Yeah, I too, uh, share, uh, many of the councilors' concerns about the fact, or accolades about the fact that parks are really great in this community, as, uh, uh, Council Pratt and others have indicated. And I think that, uh, although Surrey called themselves the community of parks, we are, I won't say we're a close second, I think we're up there sharing the same opportunity. People do get mixed up with the fact that the city of Surrey is, is indicating they're the largest, uh, uh, community in the region. Well, I think the two of us are almost very close with about over three hundred square kilometers of land. Uh, we also have eleven hundred square kilometers, no, eleven hundred acres of, that's what we're calling, of, at the park, that's not a park, it's the, um, it's the Alder Grove Base, in which the opportunity might be in the future for them to get some federal land for parks as well, so that's something we can explore. Also, we can talk about, as already we mentioned, Brookswood and other sites as well. Uh, and when, Mike, so my question comes down, when was the last time we had a parks, uh, plan, if I may? If you know?
Bit of a complicated, uh, question. The last Parks Corporation master plan, I believe, is two thousand and two, then it was fully endorsed. But since that time, um, what staff and councils have done is break up our, our plans into a, a series of smaller plans. So we do have a park inventory strategic plan, there's a sports field development plan, and, uh, there's a long-term, uh, inventory and maintenance plans. There's a number of different ones that, uh, exist and have been endorsed by council over the years. But, uh, we'll include all that information when we come back with this report, if it-
And, and I know I'll ask you, if I may, another question might be difficult as well, 'cause, you know, there's different classification and types of parks that we have, not just people hitting the ball or kicking a ball on a field, but, uh, play equipment in parks, and there's a list of a neighborhood park. My next question, what about, um, the habitat part? I, I know what they call the special areas, uh, parks. I'm not sure if they're called parks, but, uh, how would they be classified? I'm talking about wetland areas and areas that we do own the land, but, uh, um, I don't know what their classification may be, may be, if I may, through the chair.
Yep, Councilor Ferguson, um, through yourself, the, uh, you touched on a few of the classifications. There are natural habitat areas, we have trails, uh, we have municipal level parks, as was touched on earlier, we have wetland areas, there's a whole bunch of different classifications. So, um, again, I think we'll do our best to bring that forward to council, along with some of these specific items in items, uh, numbers one to six.
Thank you, Mr. Winsley. I think it's very exciting, all the number of different types of parks of which we have in this community. Thank you.
Councilor Coost?
Yeah, um, just a question through yourself to staff. Um, would their, uh, the Arbor Ribbon Trail be included as, as part of that master plan?
Mr. Coonan?
Through your worship to Councilor Coon, our staff's understanding would be it would be included.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll call the question on P1. That carries unanimously. Item P2, I'll move it, seconded by Councilor Bailey. Is there any discussion on P2? Councilor Richter?
Yeah. The, uh, it says in the therefore's that, uh, staff, uh, council directs staff to report to council on the designation and creation of a new municipal park in the Nathan Creek Wetlands. So I'm just wondering, will the costs be included in this report? And, and by costs, I'm referring both to capital expenditures as well as ongoing annual operating expenditures.
Mr. Coonan, I would consider both of those items to be included under potential plan for its development at the end of the resolution.
That is correct, your worship. There would be a financial implication section within the report that would highlight the costs associated with, uh, any parkland development, uh, as contemplated within, uh, the plan for council to consider.
Okay, so the operation costs will be there?
That is correct. Any OMR, operating, maintaining, or repair, uh, estimated for this, uh, park plan would be included in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Bailey?
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about this. Um, uh, you know, I not only look at the, the, the direct cost of, of, uh, moving ahead with the park, I worry about the cost of not moving ahead with the park in this area, with protecting the wetlands and, uh, and being able to design, uh, this in a, in a very comprehensive manner, especially up in that, uh, that part of, of the township. I think this is going to be a great addition to, um, what we do.
Councilor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Uh, through yourself to staff, hopefully a question they can answer. Is this, um, municipal park inclusive of the lands that I believe are described as the molaster property? Is, is that included within this proposal?
Through your worship, uh, to Councilor Pratt, I don't believe so. And I think, believe, currently we have it designated as just a natural preservation and park, and the plan would be to bring forward a potential, highlight the designations, and then look at creating a new municipal park would be, that's my understanding of the notice of motion.
I believe right now, Mr. Coonan, it's just land the township owns. And so this would be formalizing it into a municipal park with a plan to develop it that can be funded in, uh, now or picked up later date?
Okay, great. I, I, the only reason I ask is because I remember being on the Recreation Parks and Culture Committee before being on council and, uh, getting to tour some of the sites that I believe are included in, in this municipal park that were, uh, dedicated to the township and, and people's estates, and just wanted to kind of highlight how, how wonderful it is that, uh, future generations of, of Langley residents will get to benefit from, uh, the very generous donations of, of, of families and, and residents in the township. So excited to see what this becomes.
All right, no other questions? I'll call the question on P2. That carries unanimously. Item P3, I'll move it, seconded by Councilor Bailey. Is there any discussion on P3? Councilor Richter?
I am strongly opposed to this motion. Even the title of it is offensive. This motion goes into business beyond council's jurisdiction. It is directly impacting and infringing on what are the legislative responsibilities of the provincial and gov, the gov, or of the school board under the provincial and government. Uh, item number three, just as an example, under the therefores, how can mayor and council decide what school district thirty-five does with their capital plan? We can't. So this should not even be on the agenda, in my opinion. Not only should it not be on the agenda, it should be referred elsewhere, like closed, because it is impinging on other intergovernmental jurisdictions.
Councilor Bailey?
Yeah, I look at this, and, uh, I strongly, uh, support this. I look at, they're going to, uh, going to put ten new classrooms at, uh, at this elementary school that is on the corner of two major roads. So with ten classrooms, let's just only average out at twenty students a classroom, that's another two hundred students going. Currently, we have a lot of discussion coming from the people who, who, uh, utilize that school, uh, regarding the safety of the kids, regarding the safety of the parents, and regarding, uh, drop-off and pickup zones on there. It is a, uh, in relation to sa, uh, safety for the, the public, especially for the children, and it's an elementary school, not, uh, even a senior or a middle school. I'd like to see this moved to a much safer location, uh, and instead of, uh, uh, trying to fix, eh, an older school, uh, build a proper school in conjunction with the, uh, this school board, and, uh, I strongly support this.
Councilor Van Popta, go ahead.
Oh, I'm unmuted, sorry. Yes, um, well, I think it, although it involves a school board, it also involves the township of Langley, and I think presenting any idea, any motion, um, at this, um, forum is what we're supposed to be doing. And I think it's great for the public to be aware that, um, that an idea has come up on how to solve the crisis of, uh, the location of Willoughby Elementary, the safety, the egress, um, the, the challenges with parents having to get their kids to that school. We've got a, uh, you know, there, this, this motion speaks to, you know, really positive outcome for both the school board and for the township of Langley, and to not explore it, and to not let the public know that this could be a feasibility of, of addressing some issues with that school. I think it's, this is the right forum for it, and I, and I thank the mayor for putting this forward.
Councilor Coost?
Well, this might have a lot of merit. I don't disagree that, you know, this is an idea that, you know, it's not a new one. I've heard it before. Why would we not first communicate with the school district, um, have some conversations, um, and allow that input? Be, because before I support a number of these motions, I would really like to, to hear from the school district. So I do have a referral motion, um-
Yeah, go ahead, there's no other speakers.
Okay, okay, so, um, as all of these motions directly involve our local school district-
If you could please only reference one motion, the motion on the floor.
Okay, um, I have a motion to refer P4, but I have a motion to refer all of-
We're on, just, we're on P3?
Uh, sorry, P3, and for discussion with school district number thirty-five, uh, board and staff as soon as appropriate, but this would be my, my referral motion for, for all of these.
Okay, we can do, certainly do that one at a time. Is there a second or two to that? I don't know who said that. Councilor Martin seconds, go ahead, Councilor Coost?
Yeah, um, these are, we're, we're talking about land negotiations, school closures. Wha, why would we not first make sure that the school district is on board with this? I don't feel comfortable making decisions for the school district, so, while I might agree that this is a good idea, um, would the school district not want to be part participant in this, uh, these discussions? So, uh, that's my, my motion, is just that we would, uh, refer it back to the school district for further discussion.
Okay, Councilor Ferguson?
Okay, I'm, I'm talking to the main motion.
We're on, we're on referral right now, Councilor Ferguson.
There's referrals, something, right now, so, okay, I guess I can just speak to the referral if it's not already in the motion, because of the zer, and the zerobs, therefore's, um, endorse a replacement, the existing Willoughby, with a new replacement elementary school, and that staff be directed to communicate with the Ministry of Education, Ministry of Infrastructure, which is a new program they have in Victoria, and school district thirty-five for their consideration. I think it's already in the motion. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this is a repeat, or whether the, um, amendment is needed. I just-
Yeah, no, I concur.
Could you, can I ask the staff, or correction?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Is this not already included in the motion, if I may?
Mr. Coonan, how would you interpret the motion versus the referral? They, they do seem similar.
Through your worship, staff would essentially, uh, in the event that says endorsed, uh, staff would, uh, communicate with school district staff and, uh, bring this notice of motion to their attention, or resolution to their attention, and the appropriate, uh, parties in the provincial government as well, under the Ministry of Education and Ministry of Infrastructure.
So, okay, I'm not sure if I'm in favor of both two.
Go ahead, Councilor Ferguson.
The thing is, I still, when the time comes, I still would, hopefully, if there's an opportunity, like to speak to the main resolution.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so, we have a couple more speakers on referral. Councilor Martins?
Thank you, and I, I appreciate Councilor Coost for, um, raising this referral motion. I, I, I'm delighted that we can get a new school and a better school in Willoughby, um, and get out of that corner property and the, the old structure that's well beyond years. I, I'm wary that, um, this isn't already happening, perhaps, at the liaison level, um, the committee, to discuss this and, and flush it out, and then bring it back to council. This is the school district's purview. So, uh, that, that, I'll leave it at that, but that is the reason for supporting. It's not that, um, anything other than, I, I think it's, um, out of respect to the school district that we include them. But yeah, I'm very on board, uh, for improving our, the, the inventory of the schools in, um, Langley, and the quality of the schools, and anything that we can do within our level of authority to further that, I think is excellent. That's all.
Councilor Coost on referral?
Yeah, I mean, again, I mean, talking about the, um, the idea that we're talking about negoti, negotiating land deals in an open meeting, does that not make anyone uncomfortable? That, you know, are, are we not supposed to be, uh, following a proper process when we're talking about land? Something that, you know, I learned out of the gate when I became a counselor, that that was, you always brought that into a closed meeting. So, um, so it's not just a referral to, to, there's just a lot here, um, with, with every, every single one of these, um, motions. So it, it's just, uh, a way to maybe slow it down and, and, uh, come back with, you know, a, a little more comfort, but, you know, it's already out there now, I guess, so.
Councilor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I, um, I appreciate the intent of the, the motion, I appreciate the intent of the referral. Obviously, consultation with the school district on the schools that they're going to be operating and opening and expanding is important. I appreciate the fact that this motion was here, and this, this opportunity to, to have it referred was here, uh, and I'll, I'll speak a little bit more to it when the time comes. But I, I'm comfortable with the language in the, the first therefore paragraph, uh, because none of the outcomes that are sort of prescribed, or not even prescribed, but the outcomes that are potentially laid out in the remaining therefore clauses, none of those can happen without consultation with SD thirty-five occurring, as I understand it. So, um, I'm comfortable with the level of consultation that will occur if this is passed and not referred.
Councilor Richter?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of questions in here, but let's just stick with the principle that it's the school district's business, not ours, to decide about schools, and to plan for schools, and to get capital investment for schools. So, I, I mean, perhaps through you to, uh, staff, have, have our staff even talked to the school district staff about this idea?
Mr. Coonan?
Through your worship to Councilor Richter, this specific proposal, uh, we-
Dear worship, to Councilor Richter, this specific proposal, we would bring forward to school district staff, we have not brought this forward to school district staff yet.
So this idea is coming out of the blue, and nobody's even, as Councilor Martin said, had the respect or the courtesy to talk to the school board first?
Yeah, no, I'm going to correct you there. I think if you were to review the minutes from the SD thirty-five liaison minute committee, you'll note that Willoughby Elementary's been on the agenda.
Okay, but to this degree of, of discussion? And which, which motion was that? Which meeting was that?
You'd have to go back and look at the minutes, Councilor Richter.
Oh, because I'm sure the school district's going to have some pretty big concerns, like the cost, not to mention, for example, there's a heritage building on this site. What's going to happen to that heritage building? Does it disappear? Do we even know how much it costs to build a new school? Maybe through you to staff, does staff, our staff have any idea what the capital cost is to build a new school?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship, to Councilor Richter, we'd have to do that assessment in the event this resolution passes.
Well, I took some time to do some research on it this weekend.
Is this a referral, Councilor Richter?
I know it's a referral, but the last school that was built in this community costs seventy million dollars.
Which school was that?
I believe it's the Josie Durand, or the planning that they're doing for Josie Durand right now.
You might want to double check that number.
All right, well, I'd like to know what motion, has this motion come up at the, at the joint liaison committee with the district? And I believe Counselor Bailey and Wood, or, and Ferguson sit as council representatives to the liaison committee.
Mr. Cooner, I think we can confirm that this motion has not been presented to the SD thirty-five liaison committee. That is correct.
Okay, so we don't even know if the timeline's feasible. We don't even know if there's the heritage that, I mean, there is a very historic elementary school on that. We don't even know, there's so many things we don't know. I think we need to talk to the school board first, so I am going to support this referral motion because I believe Counselor Kuest is right. We should be talking to them.
Councilor Bailey?
Yeah, I've got some concerns about referring this. One, how far along is that fifteen million dollars? And part of this would be, you know, if, if that goes ahead and the fifteen million dollars is committed to the, the, the new modular part of the school, then it could be too late. So I would much rather get on this very quickly, and then I, yeah, correct me, please, but I thought I heard Counselor Kuest say that this is not a new idea, it has been brought forward before, so it's not necessarily out of the blue.
Councilor Ferguson?
Yeah, just some corrections, please, to page N ten, page one. I attended the school district number thirty-five municipal liaison committee. There's three items that came up on that. The fifteen thousand dollars was not in, fifteen million dollars was not introduced, as indicated by my colleagues, at that meeting. And had it been introduced, there would have been discussion. I'm not sure when the fifteen came up, but that is an answer. Okay, then other things. Regarding schools, I understand it to build a elementary school of about five hundred people, it's about between forty and fifty million dollars, and it depends on the location. And also, we provide, and we've done for a number of years, five acres of land to, in park to supplement the school, in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you, signal the discussion, I'll call the question on the referral. Councilor Van Popta is opposed. So that is defeated with Counselor Pratt, Counselor Rintmire Woodward, Counselor Van Popta, Counselor Bailey, and Counselor Ferguson opposed. Now back to the main motion. Is there any other speakers on P three? Councilor Ferguson?
Yes, I mean, this is an opportunity. And yes, there will be discussions, obviously, and importantly, with the school district. Let that be known now, today, know that we are putting this on the table, or I guess council is putting this on the table, as an opportunity. A number of years ago, an opportunity came up in this community of Langley to build a building. And what we did is we went to the province and they provided us fifteen million dollars to build something called the Langley Event Center. And had the majority of council of that day not said yes to that particular event center, it would not be built today. We had to roll up our sleeves and we had to find not just the, the money to supplement the fifteen million, we had to put together another amount of money to pay for extra costs, building costs, engineering costs, and the list goes on and on and on. I believe, the research I've done today, it's probably low, to build that same building today would be over two hundred million dollars. And some folks said, no, we don't want to do that. Langley doesn't need that. We don't need fields, we don't need ice, we don't need event center, we don't need the kids playing basketball and things like that. They can go to another community. But some of the people who sat at that table that day believed it was important. The same thing today. If you are a parent of Willoughby Elementary School and you had an opportunity to sit in an old building where safety concerns, they've already been discussed already, or have a brand-new school with park space, with all sorts of areas where you can park, you can drop your kids off, and you're not caught up by safety, where traffic lights and everything would be there for all sorts of benefit. I don't know what the school district could do, but it's an opportunity for them to sit down with us and move forward. And I think the reason why it's enclosed, if I may, through the chair, to staff, the reason why, because we own the land, the school district owned the land, there's, there's no negotiation for buying property or anything that I'm aware of.
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship, to Counselor Ferguson, the, it appears the land being contemplated is that the school district owns the Willoughby Elementary School site, and then we would, we already own the existing site that we would be potentially looking at, having discussions with them for.
Yeah, there, we own the, we're not buying new property. Anyway, Ms. Beer, I get all excited about this type of thing. And if you go up to the Langley Event Center today, you'll see all sorts of towers they're building, ice sheets they're building, dry, dry Ford space, they're doing all sorts of things with an opportunity. Now, why? For the benefit of the community for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. As I said during sort of my comments in regards to the referral motion, I personally appreciate the fact that we're having this conversation publicly right now at this table. And I appreciate the fact that, if not already, but I'm sure after this meeting's done, members of the public are going to be letting us know their feelings on the idea. And moving forward, if this motion was passed, conversations with the school board would be undertaken, and people would know that they were being undertaken about the Willoughby Elementary School's site future and possible opportunities. I, I certainly wasn't on council, and I think I was still in high school, the last time that conversations about school sites were occurring, and they were occurring without parents being made aware of it. And there's a reason why Routley doesn't have an elementary school site. And I believe that this is the appropriate time to have these conversations about a very significant location in our community and a very significant project that could have benefits for generations ahead of us. And so I appreciate that it's an unconventional way to do things, but I believe that having a bit of an unconventional approach on this one might yield results that we can all be very proud of decades from now. So I'll be very pleased to support this motion.
Councilor Martins?
Thank you. One question and then a comment. Could staff confirm the exact address? Is that something that's appropriate for the public forum here on the address of the site that we own?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship, to Councilor Martins, we can provide that. I believe it's, we just might only have the number than, rather than exact legal address.
It may be a number of parcels, but fronting Eightieth Avenue immediately to the east of the Langley Tennis Center and south of our playing fields.
Okay, thank you. And I, I already expressed earlier, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this, but I think it's for the greater good, the, the idea of relocating the school. And I guess I take comfort in the words in this motion here to communicate the following proposal. So hopefully now we're at this point here, that we will have a conversation with the school district on the, whether this is viable or not. Our kids deserve to be safe going to and from school and in their schools, and that they have a, you know, a proper location to carry on the day-to-day business of schools. I, I just want to understand, though, is there perhaps an order of operations here? So we're going to communicate the following proposal, but are we, as a council, just going directly to the Ministry of Education, the Ministry of Infrastructure at the same time that we're going to the school district? Or is there a possibility to have conversations with the school district first before going to the two ministries? That's all, I guess, my question would be.
Yeah, Mr. Cooner?
Staff's interpretation of this, other than if they were directed otherwise, would be that essentially the proposals and communications would occur with all three. So whether we proceed with first the school district, then proceed with Ministry of Education, then Ministry of Infrastructure. So more than likely, that's the route we would go, that we would, all three will be contacted separately, but we may, the school district will be approached first.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that, that's great, thank you.
Councilor Kuest?
Yeah, going back to, you know, we don't own the land. I believe the school district and the province own the land on Eightieth and to Eighth. So, of course, the potential for that land is, there's a lot of value there. So this is why, in the, in the community charter, it states generally it is appropriate to close a meeting where discussion of a subject in an open meeting raises a reasonable and identifiable possibility of damage to the interests of the local government, the public, or a third party. So, I, I, again, we could have done this. I, I'm happy to support a new school and swapping land and doing all that, but to kind of throw it on a, on a motion, you know, I have not had discussions with the school district. So, you know, as a council, to be able to have those discussions and be able to support this, that, that would have been, you know, a really, a great way, you know, a really great governance model or tool, if you will. But again, you know, we're, we've got a book of motions that somehow we've got to support or not, and discuss. So, yeah, I, I just find the process is really, it's really strange, but there we go.
Councilor Bailey?
Many times, many times it's brought up here, is there public consultation? And I can guarantee you that after today, there will be with the parents knowing at a very early stage that this is a possibility, that they will have input, both to the school board and to ourselves, about whether they think this is a good idea or not. This is the truest way I see of, of looking for public input, is saying in an open meeting like this, this is what we're looking at, we're proposing it, and we'll be talking to the school board, but we're also letting the parents and everyone involved in the area that this is a possibility. And I'm quite sure we'll get significant feedback from.
Yeah, so, no other speakers. Mr. Cooner, I think their community charter was referenced, this could be located enclosed, but it clearly doesn't have to be.
Yes, your worship, staff would, obviously, under the community charter, advise that it could be enclosed, however, it is up to the mover of the motion as well, or the maker of the motion, to determine whether it's going in the closed or the open meeting.
Yeah, I think it's important that, that council focus on the word endorse. There's not much point in, in exploring a proposal of this nature without council endorsing it, and I do think it's important to adjudicate that in the public. SD thirty-five liaison meetings also occur in the public, and I think there's been discussions, as referenced in the motion at the beginning, that this has been discussed on and off for a long period of time, and I think it's time to move forward or not. And I think that that's why it's here. And also, I would say that the Board of Education and, and School District thirty-five are fully aware of why it's on the public agenda, and I'll leave it at that. So with that, I'll call the question on P three. Matt Carries with Counselor Richter and Counselor Kuest opposed. Move on to P four, I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Is there any discussion on P four? Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I think it's, it's high time that we, we explore different options and progressive options for how we make school sites possible in the Willoughby slope, especially in regards to, or in recognition of the fact that land values and land costs are not going down in Willoughby. And so I'm excited to support this and see what new and exciting and innovative designs we can come up with. I know other jurisdictions across Metro Vancouver have already looked at this, have already implemented it, or are looking at it now, and I think it's high time that we do as well.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree, this would inform the community planning processes that are underway. We need to determine if School District thirty-five is of, is interested in this direction or not. Counselor Richter, go ahead.
Again, I believe we're overstepping our legal jurisdiction here, that this is not our jurisdiction. If the school district chooses to build urban schools, that is the school district's choice. And I think a very valid question that they might probably ask was, is first of all, has this even been discussed with them? Maybe Mr. Cooner can ask that. And, and the second thing is, how would a school in a high-rise or urban setting, like is being done in Vancouver, how does that provide the same amenities that the other schools currently have? And, and would the students who have to attend that school even have access to those amenities?
Councilor Ferguson?
Yeah, if I may.
It sounded rhetorical, but if you wish to.
No, has this been discussed with the school district, this whole concept of urban schools?
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship, to Counselor Richter, as historically in the municipal liaison meetings with the school district, there has been general discussions of urban schools with myself and also Mr. Winslet present there. However, the specific proposal itself, as highlighted, has not been provided to the school district yet.
So here we are, telling school board how to do its own business. What part of this is in any way, shape, or form right? I am opposed to this motion too. Thank you.
Councilor Bailey?
Well, I guess I read this a whole lot different than other councillors do. We're not telling anyone to do something, we're asking them to consider. And since other jurisdictions have already implemented this, I think the question of amenities for the school and all that have already been answered, and with the growing, with the growing park space that we're having, I'm quite sure that the school board and, and the township can cooperate. And you've got to put this out there again to the public. What do they think about it, you know? And everyone's always asking about public input. Well, this is pretty public right now. And since it's already being done in many jurisdictions, I, I don't see anything wrong at all with going and considering and, and looking at discussions, not telling.
Councilor Martins?
Yeah, I've heard that a couple times now, that it seems to be up to us to put things out in the public domain, to further conversations with the parents. Does this, I'm pretty sure the school district does public consultation as well. I don't think it's on us to lead that necessarily. I, I'm a little confused with the wording of the motion, because it says to confirm with School District thirty-five its willingness or lack thereof to consider urban schools. The word confirm implies there's already been a discussion or agreement, it's like confirming your reservation that you already made, confirming your appointment. So I guess my question is, again, has there been any dialogue with SD thirty-five on this concept? And perhaps they are, they are willing to look at this.
And perhaps they are, they are willing to look at this, so we're just confirming that? Or is it maybe, is that not the correct word in this motion, that it actually hasn't happened? Maybe if I could just get an answer on that?
Mr. Cooner?
So historically, there has been discussions with the school district in relation to urban schools as a part of a lot of neighborhood planning processes and items for them to consider. As stated earlier, the exact specific motion itself has not been given to the school district yet. The word confirm there, I would, I may put that back on his worship to see the exact definition. Staff's interpretation of it would be essentially would still communicate with the school district, present this proposal, and advise council what their position is with respect to it.
Okay, no, thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I, I consider a significant, if not crucial, part of council's job in working with our staff, who do a fantastic job, in creating the plan for our community going forward. And as part of that plan, as part of the community planning process, that means identifying key priorities, which to me includes where and how we're going to build schools for the kids who are going to move into our neighborhoods. And we identify that, yes, in conjunction and in collaboration with the school district. And so for me, having this motion here where it says to confirm the willingness or lack thereof to consider urban schools of the school district, to me is the beginning of the formal collaboration needed to get these types of schools built. Now, people, completely understandably, will have concerns, have ideas, have comments about the format of an urban school because it's so new to Langley, and almost all of us who grew up in this town are used to the typical school of one or two stories on five acres, and yeah, it's a fantastic kind of school to get to go to. But the reality is, is that I'd rather have a school that's a little different than no school at all. And I'm not saying that anybody on this table wants no school built. I'm just saying I think it's important for us to start the conversation at this table about how we want our community to look moving forward, and if we're developing rapid transit, if we're developing high density, then yeah, let's look and let's explore how we can get the amenities built around or in close proximity to these future schools if the school district supports us going forward with this direction, which we'll find out when we consult with them.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yes, thank you. It's about the second or third time that Counselor Pratt, he must be reading my notes, he's absolutely right. This, this is a planning exercise, so I'm going to ask a question through the chair, perhaps to Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson, when you're putting together plans with your team, your staff, and also prospective developers, do you put together a prospective site locations for future schools and futures parks that go with the schools, if I may?
Yeah, we'll direct that to Mr. Cooner. Mr. Cooner, go ahead. Dear worship to Counselor Ferguson, there's several items that are considered during a neighborhood planning process when it comes to school park sites. We do communicate and collaborate with the school district when it comes to location and size, that's required. Each neighborhood plan presented in committee charter has to take into consideration school and park sites.
Okay, so I didn't want to put, put the bearing on Mr. Richardson. I also wanted to say, if I may, that the concept that Counselor Pratt has indicated and others, is that this type of school, a different type of school that seems to be being coming up and propping up in a number of communities throughout both the region and the province, that's something that's going to take some time and effort, but if we don't spend some time looking at it, perhaps is there code problems or other problems that you might have to address regarding these type of schools?
Dear worship to Counselor Ferguson, we would, during the planning process and exercise and discussion with school district, we would obviously look at all options, but this is, as stated earlier, is a planning exercise. It may take a while for this to be implemented potentially and explore this, as it did take, I believe, several years for even the Coal Harbour Elementary School to actually come to fruition. So, but this would essentially give staff some direction and authority to at least have these discussions.
That's, that's what I thought, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
No other speakers on P4. A highlight for council, this is for a presentation to council, where a lot of these questions could be flushed out with staff. This is specific to the Willoughby, Willa Brook and Willoughby community planning updates, which are currently underway to consider urban schools for rapid transit locations. And I think, you know, it's, it's a bit interesting to see, you know, related commentary regarding cost of capital projects and, you know, so-called spending sprees, when much of that is related to providing sports amenities for school sites. And, you know, so you can't really have it both ways. I think it's important that we look at economic ways to get children out of, get students and educators out of portables. And I believe that there's a mechanism here. I did reference in the motion in whereas number two, building schools together. For those that obviously didn't have a chance, I suggest maybe go and read that and have a look at where the province is looking to move. And I think we need to get ahead of it. As Mr. Cooner said, this process can be a long one, and I think we need to start planning for more school sites that are affordable, attainable, and get as many students and educators as possible out of portables. You know, the township of Langley may not have the resources, does not have the resources to provide the school district with acres of land for every school site. And those that vote against every budget, I think maybe need to recognize and work with us on how we're going to afford these amenities moving forward. I'm going to call the question on P4, counsel. Matt Carries with Counselor Richter opposed. Move on to P5, I'll move it, is there a second or seconded by Counselor Rint? Is there any other discussion on P5? Counselor Richter?
Well, I think this is yet another example of ultravirage or acting outside our jurisdiction. Why on earth would we be consulting with advisory committees that have been created to assist the school board with its business? If we wanted to communicate with advisory committees, why wouldn't we set up our own? And call them maybe not parental or parent advisory committees, but community advisory committees? I don't believe we've done anything like that. And now we're just going to start providing matching funds? This, this is what you call, I think, scope creep. This is beyond our jurisdiction, we have no idea what this is going to cost. And, you know, if members of this council have been out talking to different parent advisory groups in the community, under what authority? And what have you been saying to them? And how have they been reacting to it? Like, it's wrong, it's not our job. So I'm opposed to this one too.
Counselor Bailey?
Unless I'm a little misdirected here, people in the parent advisory committees are municipal taxpayers. And in that aspect, I think it's great that we should be talking with them, and I know if you look, especially in areas that are more dense, if you look at the playgrounds at the schools, they don't only get used during school time. There are an awful lot of children and parents that utilize those, those things after school. So I think what it is, is actually a, a form of cooperation between the school board and the township on supplying recreational aspects, you know? You know, you've got someone who's living in an apartment, they live close to a, a school, and you've got school playgrounds. And after the, after hours of school, then the children can use those playgrounds, and I think it's just another way of, of providing services to taxpayers, and that includes people on the parent advisory councils.
Counselor Coontz?
Yeah, PACs have always been part of the school district, and they've, you know, are the voices for families and, and students, you know? And they've always been able to communicate with their respective school district, school board. So I am not comfortable now, now we're going to create a fund for PACs. Again, not with respect to the school district and to the board and to the staff. I feel like this is just really disrespectful, so I, I can't, I can't support it unless we have support from the school district. So again, it just is, I think we need to stay in our lane.
Counselor Ferguson?
Oh yes, I mean, many of us know over the years, PACs have, parent advisory committees have had many roles. Some curricular, some meeting with the administration, some meeting with the teachers, some having school dances, it's, and this is one other thing, raising, they've always been involved with raising money for a number of things. And this is one other thing that we're familiar with for raising playground equipment. This is an opportunity for us to get involved with the, with the parent advisory committees who are residents of the community and working with the school district as well. I mean, everybody's looking for money, and if an opportunity comes for funds, I, I know sometimes it says matching funds, but if I may, I hope, hopefully we don't have to match funds that they're too successful raising. But usually that doesn't happen too much. But I, I actually think this is a great opportunity that the new school that's coming up and, and I think Jolte Dorant, Josette Dorant, I think they would be happy to using this play equipment we've got there at North East Latimer School, their, park there. So there's a win-win-win-win for play equipment and other things. So they're always looking for support, and this is an opportunity to support them. Thank you.
Counselor Martins?
Thank you. Yeah, and again on this, I feel that, I appreciate the comment, staying in our lane. I'm not sure why we are involving ourselves with the parent advisory councils at all, frankly. I, with regards to this specific motion, however, be it resolved that council direct staff to report to council with a review of the merits or lack thereof of establishing this program. So I'm, I'm willing to let this move forward, you know, personally my support for the purposes of that report. I'm hoping that somewhere in here, when the report is being drawn up, that there will be some communication with SD 35. You know, perhaps there's other, there's certain schools who might not have such a strong PAC, you know, that's mobilizing. There might be greater needs when it comes to playground renovation than those that are applying for this grant. So I think it would be important for SD 35 to be included in, you know, that, who, who we're choosing to match and help out, perhaps there's greater needs in the community. So again, we're looking right now at a report, so I'd like to see the report, but I just really would like to see some more input from SD 35. Because, you know, this, this is their, this is their bread and butter, and they know best who needs the money and where.
Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question on P5. Matt Carries with Counselor Richter, Counselor Coontz opposed. P6, I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Rint. Any discussion on P6? Seeing none, call the question. Move faster, Counselor Richter, go ahead.
Oh, move faster.
Yeah, if you have something to say, let's go.
I don't know how many times I have to say ultravirage, beyond our jurisdiction. This is one that perhaps, because we're talking about land lease agreements, this should be enclosed, it's about contracts and land. Why are we even discussing this in the open meeting? And what's the cost of this going to be to TOL taxpayers? Have we even talked about this with our own QP representatives? I mean, how does QP, we, we had a presentation from them earlier today about looking for new opportunities, but, you know, getting rid of people's jobs in other areas so that we can take them over. I, I just, I don't know if, we shouldn't be discussing this, and that's why I'm opposed to it. We should be discussing this enclosed, and this is the wrong place to be having this discussion. Mainly because, mainly because we're just going to create expectations that ultimately we're not going to be able to deliver on. And how is that fair to the community, to the residents and taxpayers here? It's not fair. Counselor Coontz said earlier, and I agree, we should stick to our own lane. And we're right now swerving all over the road, honestly. I'm opposed to this one too.
Yeah, so the township currently maintains fields for students and families for, Mr. Cooner, it's got to be seven, eight, nine sites by now. Counselor Richter, are you suggesting that we cancel doing that? Since that would not quote-unquote be in our lane?
No, I'm suggesting that we have to have a discussion with the intergovernmental agency of key importance here, which is the school board, and that should, discussion should be occurring in a closed meeting, not out here in the forum where we're creating these expectations that are.
So if the township of Langley is currently paying to maintain Yorkson Middle Park, Yorkson Community Park, for example, for Yorkson Middle, and currently building.
We're already forcing the school board to pay for a road, which is not in their jurisdiction.
What are you referring to?
Well, you've, you've done this with, with the Smith Park up there in the middle school, like, this is.
I have no idea what you're referring to.
Okay, fine. No, this is wrong, we should not be discussing this in open.
Point of order?
Counselor, Counselor Impapta, what's your point of order?
Isn't that special closed?
Yeah, we may have to follow up on that, but I would just, if you have a point of order, I think I'm going to try to address the, the commentary, because I'm trying to get to the understanding of what the issue is. So we current, township of Langley currently, you know, and Mr. Cooner can confirm, currently expands significant resources maintaining and constructing athletic amenities adjacent to school sites, do we know, Mr. Cooner?
Ah, that is correct.
So Counselor Richter, would you suggest we, we not do that? Would that be staying in our lane to cancel that program?
No, Mr. Mayor, and please stop putting words into my mouth. I did not say that. I expressed extreme discomfort with the fact that we are having this discussion about current contractual arrangements with other intergovernment jurisdictions in an open meeting. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay, well, that's just different, that's, that's one element of what you said. I think I was trying to get to the other issue, but we'll go to other speakers first, and then I'll have some comments. Counselor Martins?
Thank you. I think the road in question that.
I would caution you, Counselor Martins, that's a closed item.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so the other comment I have is on item two in this motion. The new athletic amenities at the following community park locations.
Yeah.
Says a new synthetic turf field adjacent to the Walnut Grove Community Center at Walnut Grove Secondary School. We received a number of communications from Walnut Grove Secondary people a number of months back, that I think we kind of parked for a while, who had a concern about the turf field replacing a field that they currently are using, I think, for frisbee golf and things like that. Is this the same field that we're talking about again that's on this item? Because I know there was quite a lot of people that spoke up that were concerned about this turf field going in.
Yeah, I'd clarify, staff are currently tasked with a work plan item to come back to council with a proposal for Walnut Grove Community Park, specific to North Langley Diamond Sports, and contemplation of a reconfiguration potentially and other upgrades. I think staff need to know whether or not that that proposal can be going a certain direction based upon the school district's position of 2A.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to my question again. Is this the same field that was causing all the communications?
I think the, the issue was, there was a concern from someone at the school who was telling people the township was going to remove the synthetic talker field, and I believe the effort is underway to relocate it to this location, and now it's confirming whether council wants to endorse that direction.
Okay, because I seem to recall the opposite, that people were concerned about a synthetic turf field going in, and it would take away from what they were using the field for. And if it's possible, if I may, through staff, to find out if this is the same field?
There's, there's two fields. So the field with the running track, that is currently a grass field, is the field contemplated under 2A. It would relocate the existing synthetic turf field to make way for additional North Langley Diamond Sports capacity.
So North Langley Diamond Sports is. So North Langley Diamond Sports is taking over the field that's in the center of the track?
That is the direction of council to look at, a concept to upgrade Walnut Grove Community Park. You can go back and look at those motions.
Yes, I could go back and look at the motions, or perhaps if I could just find out. So you're saying the grass that's in the center of the track is potentially going to become a synthetic turf field?
That's the field being referenced under 2A to propose to the school district for their consideration, if endorsed by council.
Okay, so hopefully, we'll get public feedback on that as well, because I was receiving a lot of communications about it. It wasn't just one person. So I know that, I know how they use that field, and it wouldn't be for North Langley Diamond Sports usage. It would really change things a lot for them, so.
Yeah, no, it's being discussed, I believe, in partnership with LUSA. And I would always say to members of the public, it's always great to communicate with one member of council, but if there is an issue, it's usually best to communicate with all of us. Councilor Van Popta, go ahead. You're not done. Go ahead, Council Martens.
Yeah, I can't control who people communicate with, but now I'm confused, because you just said LUSA. I thought it was North Langley Diamond.
LUSA is the primary user of that synthetic turf field at Walnut Grove Community Park. Mr. Cooner, Jason Winsley can confirm that?
Correct. Lots of different fields at play in this discussion. So there's an existing synthetic turf field in Walnut Grove Community Park. It's on kind of the northeast portion of that, north of the tennis courts. So that's an existing synthetic field primarily used by Langley United Soccer. The majority of the rest of the park is primarily used for ball, baseball by North Langley Diamond Sports, different forms of ball. So those are the two main user groups there. The field in question here, specifically in 2A, is the existing grass field that is within the running track that is to the south of the high school, in between the community center and the high school. So that's kind of the current lay of the land. I think the discussions that are being referenced that happened previously, where council received some correspondence, is there's some discussion with LUSA, I guess with all these groups, that if North Langley Diamond Sports, the previous direction of councils to come up with a bit of a plan for the park, that could potentially see North Langley Diamond Sports facilities enhanced and increased. One of the possibilities in that is to remove the existing synthetic field that I referenced that's in Walnut Grove Community Park. That would be replaced most likely by the new synthetic field we have going in at Yorkson Community Park. So LUSA would replace their use in Walnut Grove with use in Yorkson. So LUSA would be kind of equal. We would potentially then expand the ball opportunities for North Langley Diamond Sports within Walnut Grove Community Park. And that's a field that is currently used by the high school for programming. The synthetic field would go inside of the track surface, and they would continue to use that during the school day. We usually say from nine till five, Monday to Friday, and then the community could have use in the evenings and weekends. So hopefully, that helps clarify it. It's a long-winded...
No, actually, I really appreciate that, and that helps me understand exactly what fields we're talking about. Thank you.
Council Van Popta, go ahead. You're muted.
Sorry, sorry. One of the biggest criticisms we get as elected officials is the lack of transparency. And so I think it behooves us in stuff like this to be able to at least collaboratively say, yes, we endorse the concepts of these motions, and then bring it to special closed. I don't think automatically every idea, because we don't have all the details of land agreements and things like that, need to be done in special close until we can conceptually agree that this is a direction that we want to move. Second point, being in Fort Langley, I hear a lot of complaints about the Fort Langley Elementary Fields. And given that it's one of two park spaces, yeah, one of two park spaces in Fort Langley, this grass field is very important. And so I think if we can come up with some sort of arrangement to have these maintained to a township standard, we're going to ultimately help both the school district and community benefits for residents in terms of park space. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, not seeing any other speakers. I think that this is, it's good to have council endorse this and have it proposed, and see if some of these things can be advanced for council's further approval. Right now, council, through previous policy frameworks and contexts, is currently maintaining a significant quantity of parks and athletic amenities for the school district, yet we keep hearing that we should be staying in our lane. This here is attempting to remove some of the haves and have-nots students and educators in our community with some fields that have been brought to my attention over the last few years. And I think it's deeply important for council to consider that if we're going to do it in Willoughby, and do it in Brookswood in the future, that we consider it for some other problematic locations as well, with fields, I think, in pretty dire straits. And then 2A, B, and C, I think speak to some of the many things we need to do to plan for the future, and try to work together with the school district on some of the land, very similar to what we currently do in Willoughby, which is, I think, going to be the subject of a motion here in a moment. I find it interesting that these are, these ideas are, we should be staying in our lane, and we should not be doing this, and not be doing that, but in fact, we already do all these other things. So I would like maybe some members of council to review the policies that are in place, and maybe reconsider some of their comments. With that, I'll call the question on P 6. That carries with Council Richter, Council Kuntz opposed. Move on to P 7, I'll move it, seconded by Council Bailey. Is there any discussion on P 7? Seeing none, I'll call the, Council Richter.
Yeah, attempt to negotiate with school district 35, is that not meaning get into a contract with? And if it does mean get into a contract with, why are we discussing this in the open meeting? It's closed, and that's where it should be. It should be enclosed. Again, I'm not supporting this. I don't think it should be here. I don't even think that, I mean, it's fine to direct staff to propose and attempt to, but again, what's staff coming back with? Are they going to bring the results of the negotiations back to the open meeting, or are they going to be put into the closed meeting until the decisions made by council? Perhaps staff could clarify on that.
Mr. Cooner?
Dear worship to Council Richter, in the event that this resolution is passed, and staff do meet with school district staff, and there is some negotiations, or there's an item to consider, staff will be bringing that item to the closed meeting. In the event council decides that they need to release it from the closed as well, that's a council decision.
Yeah, okay, well, we've seen this one play out in this council with the Langley City discussions, and now all of a sudden, we're going to take a different attack or approach with the...
I have no idea what you're referring to, Council Richter.
Yeah, right. I'm opposed to this.
Council Bailey?
One of the reasons why I ran to do this job is because too often, things are not brought to the public, and not brought to the public early. Now, this, we have an interest in all of these, these things we've been talking about. The township is part of them, whether it's maintenance, or buildings, synthetic fields, or whatever. And we have the right as a township council to tell the public what we're planning, what we're thinking of, and some proposals that we want to take forward. There's absolutely nothing wrong in, when it comes down to the specifics of negotiating a contract, that's a different game. But I don't want to hide in closed. I want to operate out in the open, where people can make decisions and give us early input, not have something done and then presented to the public. We've heard that many times, and an awful lot of politicians at all levels hear that, well, it's already a done deal, and you're just bringing it to us. This gives the people out there the opportunity to know what we're doing as the people in the town, the people responsible for the township aspect. I am really supportive of taking this stuff out into the open, so people can know what we're thinking, what we're doing, and what we're planning, and not hide in closed.
I agree, Council Bailey. I've seen votes about recreation facilities occur in closed, and, you know, I've learned from that, that they don't have to be enclosed, they can be enclosed. Counselor Kuntz?
Yeah, I think it's just a reminder that, you know, again, all of these things might potentially be good ideas, but out of respect for the school district, you know, this is not just us negotiating with ourselves. We're negotiating with a third party, with another, another government, another level of government. So no one's hiding. We just, someone just said, oh, we better not talk about that, because that's enclosed. So, you know, there are things that are, that are enclosed, and it's important that they're enclosed. It's why they're enclosed. So again, it's, it's the process. It's not the intent in that these aren't good ideas. Like, for me, it's, it's the process, and I don't, I don't appreciate the way that this is being brought forward, because I haven't been privy to any discussions with the school district. So no one's hiding, you know. I believe it's just maybe a difference in how we govern, and maybe our ideas, our ideas about what that looks like. And it's a respect for other, other levels of government and other people that we're negotiating with, because it's in here that we are going to negotiate something.
Council Ferguson?
Yes, if I may, through a chair of staff, this is basically a lot line adjustments from what I can understand. And the being in, we've been talking about these things for a while, and the word mutual benefit, these, you've been discussing these with the school district for as long as I can remember, if I may, through a chair.
Yeah, no, I believe that that's true, Mr. Cooner. I mean, these discussions seem to continue on indefinitely.
At your worship to Council Ferguson, that is correct. There's been historically some discussions in relation to lot line adjustments, or lot lines in generals. These are ongoing discussions as well.
Like, for example, they had, when the minister came out to make a announcement a couple of years ago about making some changes to the school. That was a public announcement. They didn't say, oh, we're... Now, with that, probably involves some lot line adjustments as to what they've done. And over the years, I use Langley Secondary School, we've done a number of things on their land and vice versa on our land, and we just need these things to be clarified. That's, if I may, is that not correct, what we're trying to do right now?
Dear worship to Council Ferguson, staff interpretation is that we would have discussions in these, or continue our discussions for these lot line adjustments. And in the event we reach agreement, or there's any adjustments made, then we're entering to an agreement and bring that to the closed meeting, and then we would seek direction from council.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Call the question on P 7. That carries with Council Richter, Council Kuntz opposed. P 8, I'm going to move that, seconded by Council Rint. Any discussion on P 8? Council Richter?
Okay, well, I guess the first copy I got didn't have the last paragraph.
I did move the amended, that is, Ms. Power, maybe you can clarify, that is the version that I actually filed.
Yes, the version was filed is what you have on table today.
Okay. So, well, this one, probably because it's related to all the foregoing ones, or P 3 through P 7, should be enclosed. However, I don't think it necessarily needs to be enclosed. But saying that, I just want to state for the record, this is one of the most punitive, uncollaborative, mean motions that I have seen this council put on table in its time it's been in office. I mean, be it resolved, the council endorse the suspension of the township's current and future joint park-school-site-land-acquisition program? Okay, what's that supposed to mean? Play ball with us, or else?
I think it would mean stay in our lane, Council Richter.
No, no, it's saying, play ball with us, do what we want, or else, this is how we're going to punish you. And I don't agree with it. This, at minimum, has to have some sort of discussion with school district 35, because school district 35 is directly affected by it. So I'm not supporting this one either, even though I think this one could probably be discussed in closed.
I mean, I understand your desire to characterize it that way, but it is a motion to simply review a policy program.
Endorse? You're not reviewing any policy. You're endorsing the suspension of joint park-school-land-site acquisitions.
Yeah, not cancellation.
Which this community has done for a long time. And there has been no discussion of this. This has appeared out of the blue, for whatever political reason it has appeared. It's wrong. I'm not supporting it.
Yeah, no, I get it. I just want to highlight here the first whereas that referenced a report to council from December 4, 2023. So I would, I don't have any, I don't know how you would conclude it's out of the blue. Believe this has been under discussion here now via reports for a year and a half. I believe it suspends for review, not cancel, and I think that that's something council needs to look at after 20 years, given the numbers in the first whereas identified in that staff report.
Where does it say suspend for review? It says endorse the suspension of...
If I could, Council Richter, I don't interrupt you. If I could ask you, please not to interrupt me, in contravention of the council procedure ballot. So again, I would highlight the first whereas, which talks about a liability of over $500 million that is accumulating and increasing. The most recent school site acquisition was over $6.5 million, I understand. And it's not a sustainable model, and I think council needs to look at it. Now, if it wishes to continue with it, that would be one thing, but I think it has to be suspended, given the costs. And I think you especially have highlighted, I believe, what you've referred to as a spending spree, and all kinds of irresponsible things. You vote against every budget that allows for a school site to be acquired. And so you voted against the DCC program as well, that it subsidizes and allows for these lands to be acquired. So, you know, if that's the reason around the cost and the potential issues taxpayers are facing, in the lack of natural park spaces as a result of these decisions, I mean, I think it's appropriate to look at it. If you want to keep the status quo, I don't really understand that, since you don't support any acquisition of school sites. Counselor Kuntz, go ahead.
Yeah, so, and I believe it was 2020, I was on the board, one of the directors for UVCM, and I recall yourself, mayor, and the chair of the school board came and did a presentation to people at UVCM about the amazing relationship that we had with the school district, and how we acquired school sites and in joint with our school district. So has something changed, or are you just not comfortable with this anymore, because it seemed that you were a couple of years ago?
Yeah, so I think if you remember my comments at that event, I did highlight that it was economically challenging.
But it was, you know, it's been a feather in our cap for, you know, a lot of jurisdictions. You know, it's worked for us, and I guess now we're gonna...
I mean, that's, that's fair. If you believe that it's a successful program that should be continued, then you wouldn't support the motion.
Right.
Council Martens?
Yeah, so if we're suspending something immediately, because it's counseling policies here, you know, is that really fair to not provide adequate notice and have conversations first? I think it's, I heard the word earlier, punitive, and I feel when you go about it that way, without any warning or notice, on something pretty, like significant like this, that concerns me. It doesn't come across as terribly collaborative. I appreciate that we need to preserve our own interests, and like you said, economically, things are getting really challenging. But it seems pretty heavy-handed, and, you know, just because we can, doesn't mean we should. And so I'm a little worried this one goes a bit too far. The other issue I have, it wasn't until today that I received an update, including the last point in this item. I appreciate that it was apparently submitted on time. But that, that gives even, in this case, I would say the school board, the school district, opportunity to respond to this, to provide their own feedback and input to us before we vote on it, because we didn't know what was happening, that final bullet point. Is the public agenda, at what point was the public agenda? Um, is the public agenda, at what point was the public agenda amended to include this last point? Or has it been? And this is not a reflection on staff, I'm just curious about, um, due process.
Unfortunately, we weren't made aware of the error until just about noon, so we haven't had a chance, has been, had a chance to go back and fix the public agenda yet.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Power, and I do want to make that really clear, this, um, this is, I'm not pointing fingers at staff, I'm just wondering when things come in late like that, um, what sort of timeframe is needed to ensure that it gets into the public domain? So, here we are, we're talking about transparency, and we're debating something that wasn't made public, wasn't made available to, um, all of council until an hour before the meeting. Um, I'm not really sure how that's fair because what I do like to do when I get my agenda package is, um, and I think like all of us, I go through point by point, and if there's questions that I have or what have you, or require further, um, research, uh, we have three days, uh, approximately to do that, and I take my time and I do that diligently. When something's thrown at me like, like this major at the last minute, it, it's not really, I don't think it's really fair to anybody involved. Um, that, that would be my observation.
Counsel Bailey?
In this motion and in everything else that we've discussed today, I will put emphasis on the word joint. Joint interaction between the school board and the township. Now, there are also other references earlier today about talking government to government. Many times, if the, if it's right, those discussions happen behind the scenes. But many times governments lobby other governments in the public realm. It's called lobbying. It's called politics. And sometimes, possibly when you're not getting movement or you're not getting the movement that you want, you speak to other governments in public. That happens all the time at all levels of government. You hear the provincial government, uh, lobbying and talking to the municipal government as we have, uh, very recently, uh, dealing with our buildings and our zoning and all that kind of stuff. So, when it is a joint venture, like all of these are, it is completely appropriate that if the council decides to take their political discussions out into the public realm, that we have the right to do that. And what it does is it lets everyone out there, the public, the taxpayers, know what we're up to. Because an awful lot of times, things are not disclosed to the public in a way that I would like, and I am entirely comfortable with these discussions on joint, uh, interactions between the school board and us in the public realm, so we can have discussions that the taxpayers know are going on. When they get more technical and when they get down to written contracts and that kind of stuff, well, then, if, if both parties want, they can go into, into close for that. But I have zero problems with interacting with another government in the, uh, public realm as long as it is appropriate.
Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you. A quick question first before a comment. When did we begin this program of a matched park with a school?
I believe the Murrayville Elementary Schools, which would be James Hill, would have been one of the first, um, but our first parks recreation master plan was nineteen ninety-one, and I believe it's within that timeframe, uh, that started.
Okay, well, yeah, I know, I know it go back a long, a long time, and, and I think, uh, Counsel Coon's is right that, you know, we should be applauded for the amount of work we've done. I remember, um, decision made by counselors of the day and, um, to say, look, if we want to speed up the process of putting schools in Langley, perhaps, again, I almost mentioned that word that Counsel Bailey, we have, we have to lobby the, the government, uh, and to what they can provide, and if we provided that park space, and they say, okay, we'll, we'll come up with a school. And several schools were built with, under that model, and it, the model, nothing short of phenomenal. Because once you go, if you go up around Langley on a, on a nice day, nice summer day with no rain, in a helicopter, and you go over, um, Alder Grove, the Alder Grove Park, all those all-weather fields, all those park space, all the things we've done, go to, and then fly over there to Murrayville, see what they've done there, then fly over there to, to Walnut Grove. What we have done with schools and parks is nothing short of phenomenal, and you look at, I still to this day can't believe that, uh, we were able to work with the school district and the province to get that RE Mountain built. I mean, that's phenomenal. Look, you get up in a helicopter, look what's around RE Mountain. Of course, I'm gonna mention the Langley Event Center again, and the kids who are playing basketball could walk over there and, and participate in a tournament. Uh, I mean, that's just an example, of course, they have their own, they have their own gyms. Um, there's just so much. Now, we've looked at, it's just getting so expensive to do some of these things, we need to have a second look at it. Does that mean we're gonna stop doing it? I don't know. But it's getting very, very, uh, expensive. We only have one taxpayer, and perhaps we can work with the province to come a, with a better model. Does that, does that mean we don't want to include schools and have more? Of course we do. So, anything we can do, but we, this is an opportunity, I guess, for future joint parks, school sites, to look at how we're gonna do it. Because the taxpayer of Langley, we don't have unlimited resources, and we still have to provide the park, recreation, roads, and, and other facilities. Uh, pools are expensive, as we know, for the future. So, you know, I, again, back to, back to the comments made to, uh, Counsel Coon's at the U B C M, yes, we have provided an excellent model, model, and we should be proud of it. Uh, thank you.
Counsel Barnes?
Yeah, um, okay, so I, I'm a little confused. It sounds like by bringing it to this table, we're able to put it out into the public domain. Um, are the S D thirty-five liaison meetings not open to the public? I thought they were.
I think you know that they are, Counsel Barnes.
Sorry, so they are avail, already open to the public?
Yeah.
So, it doesn't have to happen here. It could be happening in that venue in collaboration with the school district.
If the intent, however, is to have council endorse some motion, that can't occur at S D thirty-five liaison committee.
Mm-hmm, but it seems to be all about public, and when it becomes public, and it's not on us. It sounds like these things can be talked about in public at that level as well. Um, and I just want to be clear, um, so there's not just an endorsement, because along with the endorsement, the, it says that policies, uh, two, three, and two, nine be rescinded. Uh, with, so we're rescinding policies before we actually have completed this review.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, sorry, what was that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, um, and then this final amendment that we received in the final hour, it says that school district thirty-five and the Ministry of Education and/or Ministry of Infrastructure be informed that the township of Langley owned land adjacent to a future West Latimer Elementary School designated for the purposes of constructing an elementary school is available to school district thirty-five for its acquisition with the park, school, site, land acquisition program hereby suspended to instead be potentially developed, operated, and maintained with a new, um, updated council policy contacts, if so adopted by council. So, we are essentially backing out on probably what was assumed, that, um, we were going to be responsible for the park site adjacent to a, a future school. If that's what we're doing here essentially, um, we're backing out on, on an already agreed-upon project. In, in theory, maybe not practically, if it's still to be determined on the specifics of the project.
Uh, that's not what I read in the motion. I think it's to make the offer that, uh, the land is available for them to acquire, and if they refuse, council could consider that.
Has it until this point been anticipated that we would be doing a park site and keeping with the, the policy until this moment?
I believe, Mr. Coonner, council has endorsed the design of that neighborhood park in consultation with S D thirty-five with these existing policies, which are now rescinded, so theoretically the council could consider a, a unique design, not specific to the school district.
That is correct. At this time, we've been designing it in coordination with the policies.
Okay, uh, so we are still developing a park on that land? Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe, Mr. Coonner, that's a funded project for the design of the park site.
Uh, that is correct, and, and I believe the designation has already been for a park as well. So, if there's any changes, it needs, would need to be a designation change, that would need to get authorized by council.
Okay, so, the cost of developing that park will be borne by the township, not by the school district?
The parts development of that park site is not approved or funded by council.
Okay, so, you know, and, these, all the families in the kids that go to the school, um, we're now kind of throwing this into uncertainty, and, and I feel like, I feel like all of this conversation, frankly, it seems very us versus them when it comes to the school district. Those are our kids, those are our kids attending those schools, our community, our, and I'm just not understanding this, it seems very heavy-handed. I'd appreciate if we wanted to do a review of this policy and perhaps look at doing it differently moving forward, but to step right to suspending it. Um, it, like I said, it seems punitive, it seems very uncollaborative, and, um, I think it's the kids, it's the kids that can be affected by this, and I don't, I, I'm not comfortable with this one at all. And again, the timing of when we actually found out the wording of this, which did not give me opportunity to make proper inquiries and check into it more, um, I think it's just unfair to everyone, and I don't see why this couldn't have waited until next meeting if, you know, the wording wasn't available to us all upfront in that timely fashion.
Nobody's stopping you from moving deferral, Counsel Barnes.
All right, I would like to defer this to the next meeting so that we can have opportunity to do our proper research.
Is there a second, is seconded by Counsel Richter. Is there any other discussion on deferral? No, I think deferral is certainly worthy of consideration, Ms. Power. I think this obviously, you'll look and see what happened on this. This was filed and by the deadline, um, and as we know, the way council works, if five members of council are prepared to move forward, now we move forward, so I don't support the deferral. So, that, call the question on deferral.
Opposed.
And that is defeated with Counselors Pratt, Counsel Rint, Mayor Woodward, Counsel Van Pelt, Counsel Bailey, Counsel Ferguson opposed. Counsel Barnes, did you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Great, Counsel Bailey?
So, I'm quite sure that everyone who goes to, uh, I'd like, I make an effort, and I pretty well get to every public hearing and every public, uh, function that the township does, uh, in conjunction with being out in the open. And, uh, how many times, when it comes to staying in our lane, how many times does council get, you guys gotta build more schools. Okay, schools, you, you're putting more people in there, you need more schools. Even though we don't build schools, and even though we, we are not responsible for them technically, it is an issue that this council faces every single day. We need more schools. So, we have the right, and we have the responsibility in my, uh, action, uh, in my opinion, to bring this kind of stuff out, what we believe should be doing in conjunction, in consultation, or whatever, with the school board, hence another level of government. So, I am, I, I'm a little disturbed with some people sitting there saying that we don't have a right to talk about this in public. It's not a right, it's a responsibility, in my view, to tell everyone that this council is doing everything they can to better serve the students and the taxpayers of this township.
See, oh, Counsel Pratt.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I suppose just for myself, a couple of clarification questions, just on that last paragraph of the motion. Um, the way it's written, the school district has the ability to acquire the site that we currently own for the development of a park, is that correct?
Uh, if they were to agree to that, of course, that they have the right to do it, I believe, yeah.
So, that's the, that's the first sort of port of call that this motion outlines, is that first we go to them with the offer to sell it to them?
I think it would be consistent with potential revised policy contacts where the township develops and operates the park sites, but I think it's becoming clear, given the first whereas of five hundred million dollars and growing, that I don't see how it has the financial resources to acquire the land.
Right, and, and I guess for myself, when I look at the, the park sites that we have adjacent to the newer elementary schools across Willoughby, um, and what the likely site design of these parks might be moving forward, uh, in other areas of the township, I think of Brookswood. Uh, when I look at, you know, historic aerial photographs of the, the lands that are now these, these fields and these parks associated with the, the elementary schools, I wonder if there could have been other designs that might have been more beneficial to not only the kids who go to the schools, but maybe the, the surrounding communities. And for myself, I'm, I'm optimistic and I'm encouraged by the fact that, uh, as we move forward, if, if something like this is passed, that we can come up with even more innovative designs for these parks that maybe retain some of the tree canopy that, uh, we've lost in Willoughby moving forward, or potentially add to it. And especially in Brookswood, which we know where people are highly concerned about tree canopy loss, uh, we might have the opportunity to preserve more of it. So, uh, for myself, I, I think it's, uh, an appropriate time to review this policy, and I think it's an appropriate direction to take to potentially explore even more exciting, innovative, and, quite frankly, community beneficial designs. Thank you.
I appreciate that aspect of it as well. There's no other speakers, I'm gonna try to, you know, I, I do understand members of council who maybe don't, don't agree with, uh, don't agree with us in general, wanting to frame this in a certain way, you know, not collaborative and punishment and all of these kinds of, kinds of things that are, I think, are really quite irresponsible, and certainly contrary to the council procedure bylaw, to have debate of that nature, that personal, do feel that it's inappropriate. Um, but I understand the desire to frame it that way. Uh, I think for me, I come back to a simple question when residents ask me, why are there no parks in Willoughby? Well, because all the money is going to athletic facilities for school sites. And we need these athletic facilities, such in the case of the Langley Event Center, or Yorkson Middle, uh, Yorkson Community Park, and the new upcoming Smith Athletic Park. Um, if, even if the Smith Athletic Park were to have been the bare-bones community park or neighborhood, a large neighborhood park for a high school, the cost to the township is tens of millions of dollars. And we have provided that to the high school and middle school site, yet we're labeled as not collaborating. We are proceeding with trying to work together on, um, relocate and solve Willoughby Elementary, which could lead to some great outcomes for the community, yet we're labeled as not collaborating. So, again, I understand the desire for some politicians to try to frame it that way and try to make it look that way, but that's not how it is. I think it's important that the public has a chance to be aware of these proposals because they're so significant and so far-reaching and, uh, in, are a long-term potential reset on how we develop and grow this community. We do not have ten-acre school sites in Willbrook for schools, especially when the province, the very people that we're building these school sites for, have stripped us of our ability as a local government to secure parks in Willbrook within a kilometer of a Skytrain station. That's potentially coming for the Two Hundred Street corridor as well. Yet that same arm of the provincial government will reach out and expect, not ask, not, you know, say, hey, could we work together, like entitlement, and expect tens of millions of dollars to come from the township of Langley to build schools. Yet we're told in one motion to stay in our lane, in another motion to keep the program. So, I think we're seeing opposition for the sake of opposition, and I wish it was a little different than that. What I'm trying to do is advance a review of a program that I don't see how that's gonna work ten or fifteen years from now with the liabilities that have been outlined by our staff of over half a billion dollars to build schools for the province. And this is why we don't have nature spaces in our urban areas. And as we continue to densify, where is the money gonna come from to provide outdoor park spaces in dense urban areas when all the money is going to athletic facilities for schools? And I think that, at least the council and the public, need to think about it and review it and consider it. And I'm not afraid of having that kind of a conversation, and I'm certainly not gonna twist it into something that it isn't. And so, I look forward to maybe ending up right back where we are, that this model is gonna continue to work for another decade or more. But if the school district is planning a five-year and longer capital plan, it needs to know the township of Langley may not be able to afford eight or ten million dollars an acre times five for every school it wants to build when it doesn't seem to want to consider urban schools in a substantial way. So, what is the plan to get kids out of portables in the township of Langley? Because I don't- Because I don't like to see the province and the school district using its five acres for a parking lot where it used to be playing fields, used to be playgrounds, and now it's parking lots for portables the day the school opens. This is a model that I think isn't working. I walk around the community and I hear that it's not working. Catchments are really problematic because of the nature of the school system and how we're growing and developing this community together. And, you know, while we may have some here and on the Board of Education that want to twist everything into a negative, I view this as an opportunity to develop the community better than we are today. Have more schools, have more school spaces for educators and students that aren't in portables, and really see how the community is growing and densifying in these areas, and how are we going to provide a municipal park in urban areas if all the money is going to school sites? And I think we at least have to have the conversation. If others don't want to have it, they want to criticize everything, they want to vote against everything, vote against every budget, and then scream about how we're spending too much money when all the money's going to the province, I think it's something that I struggle with, but I understand why politicians do that. I try to stay focused on how are we going to grow and develop this community better than we have been. So with that, I'm going to call the question on P8.
That carries with Councillor Martens, Councillor Richter, and Councillor Coonst opposed. Yes, that has been requested by multiple to my phone, so we will take a five-minute recess. And I don't want to have a recess, but Councillor Bailey and a few others would like one, so we'll recess for five minutes and return here in five minutes and continue. Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Cooner, we'll get underway. Item P9, I'll move it. Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion? Okay, call the question on P9. That carries with Councillor Richter opposed. Move on to P10. Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you. I'll just read it out. Be resolved, the staff be directed to amend the procurement policy administratively to purchase goods and services of Canadian origin whenever possible, keeping in mind cost and other consideration. Actively continue to support Township of Langley and Canadian businesses. Number three, work with regional communities on initiatives that support local and Canadian businesses. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Bailey. Councillor Ferguson, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Wasn't that a great game, Canada against the United States last week? I mean, it's good to see winning overtime, a lot of Canadian enthusiasm. We've had challenges right now in the world, especially our neighbors, the South, with tariffs coming in. We need to stay together. I've talked to other people within the region, and I, hopefully, I know the president of UBCM, who's a councillor in Coquitlam, that mentioned her as well, is we need to work together to support Canadian businesses, support Canada. And we've got some challenges over the next few years, so hopefully, working together for the support and benefit for Canada, this is why I put this forward.
Councillor Bailey?
I am so glad to see this kind of stuff, and, you know, I kind of have to thank certain people for stoking up the patriotism of us finally. And I look at people like the so-called Mr. Wonderful, who used to berate businesses for not going to China and not taking their manufacturing and that to China because it's cheaper. And now we're finding that it would be really a beneficial thing in so many different ways that we do our own manufacturing here, and I have to just think of, I got, I always have a problem with appliances. You buy them for a year or two that are made over in China, and they're just crap. And then I go out to my grad's and I got my 35-year-old fridge that was made in America. And right now, you know, after Canada, I've always, I don't shop at Trader Joe's or I don't go and get my gas across the line, even though I've lived within two miles of the American border for about three or four decades now. So I am really glad to see this kind of stuff. I hope the B.C. government listens to this and instead of buying their ferries and that over in Germany or wherever else, they support Canadian businesses like C-SPAN and start looking at, there are better benefits all the way around for our society in Canada by being a lot more Canadian when we're purchasing and when we're using services. Thank you.
Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I believe C-SPAN may be American, but I could be corrected on that. Doesn't matter, it's American money. It's going into American pockets. I was just wondering, I support the sentiment here. I think we need to do more of it, but I'm just wondering through the mayor to staff if legal will be consulted on this prior to any changes being made.
Dear worship to Councillor Richter, we will review the procurement policy and see if there's any potential for amendments and review it in a legal context with legal counsel as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Motions like this are ones that I'm happy to support. And it's been interesting in the last few weeks seeing the groundswell of patriotism and of pride in our country. And for myself, growing up in the generation I have and in the time I have, it's been interesting because I find too often Canadian identity and Canadian patriotism is tied up in simply not being somebody else, i.e. not American. And I think that moving in this direction is a tiny little thing that the township can do to, in each of our residents at least, instill a bit of pride that we are Canadian and what makes us special and different. It includes the potential procurement partners and suppliers to the township. So appreciate Councillor Ferguson bringing this one forward.
Any other discussion on P10? Seeing none. I just had one question I see before I do that. Mr. Cooner, the motion says to amend the policy, but I presume that to mean you'll look at coming back to council with a report with the draft amendments?
That is correct, your worship.
Yeah, just want to clarify that. Okay, thanks. So we'll call the question on P10. That carries unanimously. Councillor Pratt, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I'll simply read out the therefore clause. Therefore, be it resolved that council direct staff to report to council on alternative forms of bonding for servicing agreement security, such as a surety bond pilot program or other options that may be appropriate for council to consider pursuant to subdivision and development servicing by law number 5382. So moved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Rint.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I'm happy to have this on the agenda this afternoon. I think that reality is the more flexibility and options we can provide the building community in the township, following along the lead of other municipalities such as Surrey, in delivering more flexible options for how projects can be financed and built, is worthwhile exploring and seeing how that pilot program might work in a township-specific context, I think is something very worthwhile to consider exploring. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Richter?
Yes, again, a question to Mr. Cooner through the mayor. Will staff consult with legal on this one as well?
Dear worship to Councillor Richter, yes, they will.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to highlight, I think this is a good idea. I'd like the reference to a pilot program. Mr. Cooner, I think that a pilot program would allow you to and staff to consider who would be considered to participate in said pilot program. It wouldn't necessarily be opened up for every and all developers. It would be a more cautious approach.
Yes, your worship. We'll be looking at several options, and within the options... And within the options themselves, our understanding is even companies that provide surety bonds have their own criteria and eligibility, and it's quite stringent as well.
Okay, that's good. So I appreciate this. Noticed Surrey is also doing this in a pilot program format. So I think it is time for the township to consider it as well. So with that, I'll call the question on P11. That carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Councillor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. A couple of items. First, based on an item nine in the January 23rd distribution package with staff replies in the February 3rd distribution package, as well as other feedback that I believe many of us have received from residents in the area that's affected specifically at 250th and 56th in regards to potential crosswalk infrastructure or some kind of traffic calming there. I'd like to make a motion based on the request in item nine for a possible staff report on potential options and associated potential costs with a crosswalk at 250th Street and 56th Avenue.
Sorry, could you repeat that? I was distracted. Sorry about that.
So I'd like to make a motion to request from staff a report on potential options and associated potential costs with a crosswalk at 250th Street and 56th Avenue. If that requires a modus motion for...
No, no, I think it's an item in the distribution. I think we can take it now. And we can always move to furl if someone wants some more time. Councillor, is anybody wish to second that? Councillor seconded by?
Yeah, I have.
Seconded by councillor Rin. So councillor Pratt, go ahead.
No, I think the motion speaks for itself. And I'd be happy to enter, like, support a deferral if any of my council colleagues want more time on it. I just wanted to get it on the agenda.
Yeah, councillor Van Popta.
Yeah, so I have been working on that same intersection for a while with staff. And so we have done a lot. I'm not, I thought it already came back in a report, but perhaps I'm mistaken. But I know that we have done traffic studies for that area recently, like within the past year and a half, just based on that. So maybe we can find out if that was formalized. I can't remember off the top of my head. But that was part of the reason why we were doing the 56th corridor study, to see if there's some parameters or areas that we can improve that intersection along with other concerns on 56th.
Mr. Cooner, are you aware of, I mean, we may have missed that this is already underway in some form?
Yeah, there was a motion previously to look at the Salmon River uplands as a whole for pedestrian safety improvements. So staff are working on that report.
Do you have a timeline for that?
Q2 this year.
Q2 this year. So maybe this could be added to that or in some form could be added to that process. Or if that's going to take longer, it could come back separately.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll add it.
I believe that there was notes to specify that that 250th and 56th be looked at as a key piece of that report.
Okay, so this is challenging when we get it under other business. We don't have a ton of time to see what's already underway. So I think staff can figure it out and combine it or bring it back separately, Mr. Cooner.
Yep, staff will consider that.
Any other speakers on that motion? Label that. Call the question on P12. That carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Councillor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight item five in today's distribution package regarding the township's tree voucher program, where township residents can apply online to receive a voucher that's valued up to $350 for deciduous evergreen and coniferous trees and have until March 31st to get their voucher. Just two questions through yourself to staff, if I may. Is the township communications department planning any public engagement or awareness campaigns about the program this year? And with the March 31st deadline to download the voucher, is it correct, or is my assumption correct, that residents can still use the voucher after March 31st?
Dear worship to councillor Pratt, the voucher itself is published on the Township of Langley website and will continue to be published there. Communication department can look at other alternative communication strategies in order to educate the public and make sure that they're aware of the program. And councillor Pratt, do you mind repeating the second question?
So the March 31st deadline that's outlined in the memo to council in the today's distribution package says there's a March 31st deadline for the voucher. And I'm just wondering if staff can clarify if that March 31st deadline is simply the deadline to download the voucher or if it has to be used by the 31st of March as well.
Dear worship to councillor Pratt, I believe you have to use the voucher by March 31st, 2025. And expires and then the program will start in November 2025.
Okay, great. Appreciate the clarification.
Okay, is there any other business? Does anybody have any items for special closed? No, get a motion to resolve and to close. Moved by councillor Rin, seconded by councillor Bailey. All those in favor, opposed. That's carried. Get a motion to terminate. Moved by councillor Bailey, seconded by councillor Rin. All those in favor, opposed. That's carried. Thanks.